This one?
Yeah, it's not. I mean, it doesn't really matter.
That was me. Okay.
My.
I'll let him.
I thought my computer was dead.
All right. We're missing, we're missing forty percent of the crew.
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna start anyway. Ellen, so you ready?
Yeah.
All right, good.
Bless you.
Yep, I'm ready. Would you take your seat, please?
I will.
Good evening and welcome to the April twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Trustees Work Session. I need a motion to open.
Come a second, like this.
Usually wrestling for it.
All in favor.
Aye.
And, okay, we have a, we have a items on the agenda tonight, and there is staff and there are volunteers who are here to present. So, as is the tradition around here, is that we take volunteers first, and then we go to staff, and then we go to regular items. So the first item on the agenda is, I know it's here.
What's funny looking at?
I'm looking up the committee, okay, Climate Action Plan. The Committee for Environment. Who would like to present? Hi, Ellen. Oh, yeah.
Yes. Everyone, so I'm here as the Chair of the Climate Smart Communities Task Force, which was established in July of two thousand and twenty-one. We've done some great work since we've been established. This is part of the New York State Program to get municipalities to take actions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So we're here today to ask you to pass a resolution to sanction us to work on a climate, a climate action plan. In doing this plan, we worked on a greenhouse gas inventory for the government operations, including building facilities, the sleep, the outdoor lighting, and that was actually by me. I work with Jerry and Dan and Courtney to get data, and we're working with the Hudson Valley Regional Council. They're giving free support to municipalities because they're trying to incentivize municipalities to take these actions. So we, we did that report. It was based on two thousand and nineteen data, so that's our baseline for greenhouse gas emissions. We had the data for two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, and when we analyzed it, we decided to toss it out because there's too much noise from Hurricane Ida and COVID. So we have a baseline from two thousand and nineteen. So the reason we're here today is that now that that's a prerequisite, the next logical step would be for communities such as ours to do a climate action plan, and this is a six to twelve month project where we have three volunteers to work on it. It's myself, Lingma Wauhegan, and Dan Kushnik, who is not here today at this meeting. But the three of us will be working on it, and we've already started working on it by attending some of the meetings. And, and then we really need the involvement of, of the village. We need the involvement of Jerry and Dan, and I understand that there is a new village planner. It'd be great to be part of this process. We'll need the involvement of Carolina at the Building Department, James Barney at DPW, the Police Department. Because one of the main things we're gonna look at is the fleet. So in our village, the main contributor of greenhouse gas is the fleet. So we wanna look at that, you know, just go through all the vehicles, see if some could be swapped out for electric or hybrid. If there's a way to right-size the overall fleet. So again, what we're here for today is to pass a resolution, just sort of giving us permission to say that you are supportive of us undertaking this initiative. Communities are asked to take at least one greenhouse gas reduction activity. Hopefully, you know, we take more than that. We're asked to take something short-term and something long-term, just to keep us on track with the state targets. Just to reiterate, people don't know, New York State passed climate law, a climate law back in two thousand and eighteen, whereby the state is looking to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by forty percent by twenty thirty. It says forty percent to the ninety, ninety levels, and reduce emissions by eighty-five percent by twenty fifty. So these are lofty goals. I think our village has been doing it, and sure, they're adopted, just anyway, you know, we changed out the lights for IDs, who are bound to install, I guess, during in July.
July, yep.
Putting electric vehicle targeting stations for residential use and also for village vehicles. So I think that we've done a lot.
Change all the lights on Lanza Field, too.
On Lanza Fields, okay, that's good to know. And so we'll look at things like, you know, solar on rooftops, canopy solar, maybe doing energy audits of buildings to see if some buildings can maybe swap out for electric furnaces or water heaters. And as I said earlier, we'll get into the in-depth to see, you know, what cars could be swapped out for hybrid electric when they get to the end of their useful life. So.
Ellen, one thing?
Yes.
We also spoke about a very unique initiative where we would be doing a buyback program for backpacks. Right?
What was?
There was.
The one we just talked about?
Yeah, because that was Ellen's.
So we're gonna be working on an initiative where people can bring in, it's basically a buyback program. People could trade in their gas-powered leaf blowers or any other lawn equipment that they have that's gas-powered, whether it's, you know, a weeder or a lawn mower, and then they would get a hundred dollar coupon at a local retailer, either Foley's or I don't remember the other, the name of that.
KRB.
KRB, to go in and buy an electric piece of equipment. And then we would take back equipment and get it straight. So Bedford did this program, it was highly successful, and the money to do this is that we had gotten a grant, I think, two years ago.
Yep.
From doing a community campaign, and we got a grant from Nasser. So we're using a grant on these programs, which we'll get started, I think.
Next month or two.
Okay. So that's really a great incentive to residents to say, okay, you know, it's time to sort of retire my gas-powered leaf blower, which is a lot of them going on right now.
Yeah.
Yep. Do we know how much a non-gas leaf blower goes for?
Yeah. So, Leilani, for a handheld battery operator, lithium battery operator, it's somewhere between two hundred and twenty dollars and go way up to three hundred and fifty dollars. So if you get the lower end one, we're basically paying half of that.
And how much are the gas leaf blowers?
In excess of four to five hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Like any appliance or piece of equipment, there's, there's a range of.
Yeah. No, I just wanted to make sure that, that, like, it's not gonna, you know, if, if a gas leaf blower, and I've seen that this program's not great, but if the gas leaf blowers make way cheaper, if somebody's just gonna go for the cheaper cost rather than, but if the, the battery-operated one is cheaper and it's more energy efficient, then why not, and help? So it's just in making sure that.
And, and, and if I could jump in, KRB, the folks over there told me they don't even sell the gas blower, the gas power plants anymore. So that's all.
I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, it's also the plugin. We also talked about it the last CFD meeting, to include plugin as well, so that, you know, this property owner can plug in in their porch out front or the back and still use the plugin blower, which, Leilani, are even cheaper than that.
What's in sauce? Yeah, is the is the resolution in our packet? If you want us to, I don't believe so, but we, it's probably a standard resolution.
I think it's a sample, but I'm happy to send them that one.
Yeah, all right.
I can give you a sample. It's really simply just saying that
we're.
the village is, you know,
supportive.
going to embark on this project, just support.
Okay. Is everybody okay? We're putting that resolution on the agenda for the first meeting in May.
Yes.
And just what's, what's been on our agenda for a few weeks has been Jerry, Jerry, you compiled a bunch of these kinds of documents from other communities.
As far as this?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think did some of this.
Oh, yeah. Well, this is what the CFT provided.
Yeah, so and that's what we have, that's.
Is that a?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's part of the town of Garden.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's, I think, a compromise.
Yep.
Okay. I, you, I'm probably the board in that listening.
Great.
And we appreciate all that you have done, and thank you for still being involved after your tenure to help.
Thank you. Well, this is a different committee, but I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. It's related.
Related.
Okay. The next item on the agenda that has to do with Committee for the Environment is
it's that three H.
Free H. Asks and Initiatives.
Yes, there are four things on this.
Why, why don't we get the committee up there, Mike? Hello, David.
Next, Tom, for, to come here, taking us out of, out of order.
Please just identify yourself with people playing along at home.
Okay. I'm David Freeman. I'm the Chair of the Village of American, Committee for the Environment, and we have a number of asks, some of which were just passed at our last meeting last week, so we don't, some, some of these are not actually represented by specific documents that we ought to have passed, but thought, we thought it would be a good idea and taking the lead in, in, when these issues to the board. I'm happy to discuss them, or if you wanna take the lead and, and go through, go through the.
Go, please, go through them, go through them.
Yeah, we're, we're working on a number of things that I think we feel are very exciting and, and will really improve the quality of life and the, and the environmental condition of the village. The first thing is Maranac Speedway, and Kate, the haze who's in the audience, has taken the lead on this. We've identified a series of properties along rivers, Maranac and Shellwreck River, that are in various stages of disrepair. They're overgrown, siltations, but if they're properly treated, they can be renovated into a beautiful and very attractive walkway that can take of, of somebody who is, both can take you from Harrison to, to a village, the town of Maranac, and connect to the sound. And if you, there's, we have a map which we can, we can present to you, shows where, where, with a little bit of money and a lot of love and care, you could actually string a, all these things together and make a beautiful walkway, which incidentally goes through a lot of underserved areas that, you know, if they're not parkway, park, parking in there, it can be recreation. It will help with flooding because a lot of the land is, is, is in disrepair. Things are falling into the river, and there's siltation during every rain event. So, and if you plant trees and, and grass and, and other things that can hold the soil, it's gonna improve the flooding situation. The other good thing about this is, and we're trying to connect with what's happening with the Corps of Engineers, and there's a lot of money in our flood control, although in this general area, we're hoping to get this ready for for action i- in a timely way so that we can take, we can cooperate with the Corps of Engineers instead of fighting them and having them do hard infrastructure when we want soft infrastructure. We, we think there's a real potential for doing something that's a win-win for both the environment and flood control. So we're gonna be bringing that, as we develop that, we're gonna be bringing it to the board. We'd like an endorsement of the concept of a Maranac Speedway, and then we'll take it forward from there.
I'm, I'm very excited about this because it is exactly what I hoped would happen, and you guys just did it, that, that amazing committee. You guys are amazing. Somebody to, to look over the shoulder of the, of the Army Corps and, and the village as we do flood mitigation to make sure that we're not, you know, we're not building the LA River with this, you know, that, that we're, that we're, we're, we're softening the, the trauma of some of the changes that, that flood mitigation, you know, will, will inevitably bring and, and, and help upgrade the appearance of some of these areas. So I'm just, I'm just delighted about this, and I would love to get behind it and, and just to tell them, yes, tell, talk to us, bring it to us. We're happy to hear it. That's my feeling.
I just want to point out about the Army Corps of Engineers that the funding that we receive, the Army Corps of Engineers plan, and I, and I'm not saying we shouldn't soften it, try and make it more, you know, aesthetically pleasing, is based upon that plan.
Yes, I understood.
Okay. I just, I, not everybody in the community understands.
It's not changing, this is not tweaking, this is not altering their plan in any significant way. This is just taking, taking care of things at the edges.
Okay.
Understanding that flood control and flood mitigation is the number one priority. That's my understanding, am I correct, though?
That's right. We're, we're, we're in this to work with the Corps, not to, you know, go ahead and, we think there's, there's plenty of opportunities to make this something that is consistent with the Corps' plan, but also is a net benefit to both the environment and the recreational opportunities that are presented by these rivers. We wanna look at the rivers not as problems that we need to solve, but as opportunities to create something really beautiful.
And the, the Corps' reaction to that open, covert idea through, at, at the confluence gave everybody on the, on the, on the committee some optimism that, that they're, they, they, they're willing to listen.
So there's a lot of work to be done, but we wanna start the work. We're only started it, and again, I wanna take my hat off to Kate, who's the, the, took the first initiative, but, but it's such a great idea, and it, it, it could be a tremendous feather in our cat. It's, it's almost like a high line, but brought to Maranac and using the rivers as the way of introducing people to this beautiful, but underserved, part of our, our community. So that's number one. Number two, I think you've been, and, and I don't know to what extent you've been aware of the bike lane project, but it actually goes hand in hand with this, making Maranac more bike-friendly. And we had presentations by Mike Smits, who is, is trying to get, and, and it's a matter of getting funding. I think this is something that we're, really, he's bringing to us and we're bringing to you because there's a lot of funding for these, these projects, and while the funding is available, we should take advantage of it. So again, we're looking for support from the board, and I think the support will come in the form of having village, village officials look hard at the funding opportunities applied in a timely way.
With grants.
The funding that's available.
And with our sister communities on the other side.
Right, right, I mean, it connects to other, other communities. And, and that's one of the really good things both about the, the bikeways and the, the greenway, is it's, we're connecting. It's not just the village of Maranac getting a little isolated. Odd, we're connecting both the recreational, both the walkways and the bikeways to other communities.
Makes sense.
A third thing, and again, Kate was a, a essential starter of this initiative, is looking at I ninety-five. It's, it's actually pretty astonishing how much the I ninety-five interchange is included to siltation and flooding, and the Thruway Authority has not been a very good neighbor to us. Not because they're hostile to us, but nobody's been paying attention. They have clover leaves that are basically deserts. They, they store, spocks are stored there, dirt is stored there. Every time it rains, it just goes right into the Maranac River, and if you walk along the Maranac River, you see a cupboard that are just emptying directly from the Thruway, which, if they were building it today, they never would have committed to do. And so we need to have the village, we're already in touch with, and you may also have been in touch with Steve Otis and Shelley Mayer, who have been talking with the Department of Transportation. There's money, again, there's money there to address these problems, and we should get do what we can to get the Department of Transportation to pay attention to us and not let their facility, which obviously we use because we all are designed to be by, but, but it needs to be, the, the runoff from there needs to be handled a lot better than this now, and it would help our flooding situation significantly.
And, and I think the, the, the model on this was, you know, if they built the highway today, what would they have to do? And, and, yeah, it was built in the fifties, but there's a certain amount of retrofitting that we can, I think we can reasonably request from them to, to bring this up, up to, up to standards. And when you, you look at it, I mean, what was the number, the amount of acreage in the village that, that is?
Twenty-eight point two.
Twenty-eight point two acres of
Concrete.
of concrete, and all that goes in the river, all of it, and it, it's just a stunning amount of water.
The accidents that happen, too.
Yeah.
Is the fluids get pushed in the river.
Yeah, so, so if, if we can get them to help us handle that, I mean, that's gonna deal, that's essentially for us, it's an upstream problem, but it's the very first upstream problem we have, and it's probably more critical than, 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 not, not that it isn't, but than the development in, in Harrison and White Plains, which is important, but that's right there. And we can, and, and I think we can bring some, some effort to bear on them, and what, what Kate has done is remarkable. I mean, it's amount of, the amount of work that's gone through it, hats off, and, and I'm just thrilled that you guys are doing this stuff.
So two more things quickly. One is green purchasing.
Sorry, so they get green?
Green purchasing. There is a new New York State Program to encourage municipalities to purchase green products, environmentally conscientious products, and it's actually a very well-developed program. They have a, a website, there are eighty-eight or so products that have been tested by this board that are equivalent, at least equivalent in terms of quality and price. And the, the, the program involves a, the municipality adopting a resolution to encouraging, to, to encourage repurchasing where practicable. And if, I gave, blew a copy of the, the model language, I don't know if you have it with you.
I'm sure it's in there somewhere.
But, but that's something that, again, it's, it's not a net cost.
It's like cleaning products or?
It's, it's all sorts of things, cleaning products, a lot of it is cleaning products. Some of it is, is mechanical things. I'd have to actually go look at the list, but it's a pretty essential, a, a long list of things that, that you can purchase green and not pay a premium and do something for the environment. So that would be something that we would ask you to adopt, not using the model language that has been provided by the state.
David, they did. We, I just didn't get a chance to send you back an email.
Oh, okay.
But we need to implement it. So the directive would be from me to our staff to implement green purchasing in, that's included in the, in the resolution. But that was already done.
Okay, fine.
I get.
However, mechanically you wanna do it, the concept is, is the important thing. And then the final thing is native plants. There is a resolution to be passed, again, I give credit to Kate, she seems to have her name on a lot of things tonight, about the importance of planting native plants where we can. Native plants are, it's not just a, a nice thing to do, it's actually healthier for the environment because native plants actually react better with pollinators and the earthworms and other things. It's much more efficient ecologically and better for the environment to plant native plants. Again, it's not a net cost, it's just a conscientiousness of where you can plant native as opposed to whatever happens to be, you know, first row of the nursery when you walk by.
Awesome.
So those are the things that we're working on, and we'll be bringing those to the board for specific actions in the next, you know, over the next couple of months.
Sure enough. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all you were all doing.
Thank you, Ellen.
We did, yeah. Well, you can give it to me, just write it down. Yeah. We did add, we did add the, man, we did add, no, it got done, but we did add the Westchester County Native Plant List, which we want to utilize as ours, and of course, every time we do plantings, we commit to native plants. Our trees are all planted, they're all native trees. So when we, when we finally get to Fenimore and Prospect, those will all be native plants, which Kate designed for us, and then I redesigned. And so we're gonna be planting that, but if she doesn't get this cast off, she's not gonna be allowed to, to plant with us, so.
She can just direct.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
And she can direct your tankers.
Thank you all very much for coming out tonight, much appreciate it. All right. The next up on the agenda, we're gonna, is Lieutenant Trujillo is here of the Village of Maranac Police Department. And then.
It's Peter, Lieutenant, just logged in with the same.
You are here for the, I'm just trying to find the, I know what you're here for.
You're on the next floor. You're logged in, using your, using your password.
Please, updating chapter two forty-six on motels.
Boss, are you on top of the script? This is, okay. You're off. Where's the fifth?
Mr. Mayor. Board, I think if you have, I'm gonna make a quick modification or a question modification to chapter two forty-six, subsection eleven of our current village code for motel inspections. One of my detectives does a yearly inspection of two motels in the age. And we're asking one, for motel tenants or persons in charge of the front desk, need to make a copy of a picture ID for a person renting a room as part of their guest cards. So we're asking for that requirement to be made. Second one being that motel tenants really should have surveillance cameras on-site and record and store footage for at least thirty days. The reason why I'm asking this is because during investigations, it's a different reason houses investigate crime. We found several instances at the motels where unsavable characters have come and committed certain crimes, and we need this information to further along on investigations.
Let's suppose, you know, do you see any difficulty with us passing a law?
I don't, I don't.
Okay.
Okay.
Is the law, it's, as, it's in a pack, is that in its final form?
Yes.
Anybody on the board have questions?
No.
No.
No?
No.
No, I mean, I, I don't have, I don't have it in my packet.
It's one of those, we didn't prepare.
It's quote two forty-six, and then the requirements are in subsection eleven. So we're asking to add two more requirements in that subsection.
And it's not, it's not in your packet?
No, I downloaded my, I go, I'm.
You guys have it in your, in your big packet? I have. Sometimes our paper, our, our.
Our line packets are, are, something gets.
We had, we didn't include a copy of the original law.
We don't have the law, we just have the memo, yeah, yeah, we don't have that.
Okay.
Okay.
Proposed local law, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So we. That's a. Comes to the village board further.
Now's the time.
Yes.
Now's the time to talk.
What I'm hearing from the board, that there's an consensus to pursue this.
Yes.
So our legal department will codify it. And then it'll be, then it'll be brought back to us at a work session to review the proposed law, and then most likely it'll be, then be put on a regular session to be passed into law.
It doesn't sound too complicated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While, while we have Lieutenant here, I wanted to ask about, sorry. Did I jump in, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
About the, we had a recent vandalism in the, in the, in the Harbor Island, where dock was vandalized, but, you know, there's no, no, no pictures. I am of the opinion that it would be helpful to have cameras on the, on the, on the marina and a couple of other spots in Harbor Island, like the beach, the splash park, and maybe the dog park. I'm wondering what you're, you're feeling about.
I'm all for it. There was help, there's houses and investigations that buy people, so absolutely.
Okay.
I agree with you, so.
Go ahead.
No, 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 I was gonna say, could they work with the Harbor Master and, and Parks to figure out your exact position where?
This is, this is, there's been some cherry, cherries up on.
So, LT, it's similar to the progress that we did downtown, but isolated to the recording, storage and recording for thirty days. We don't necessarily need the monitoring, right? Because we have park staff, because we have. Um, the monitoring, right, because we have park staff, because we have. Um, um, harbor, right, harbor staff, and we also have the, um, the bay constable, right, so. It would be some kind of a, um. Coordinated effort to provide cameras, because I don't know if you saw the report, but they cut up our dock. It's a wood dock that we just replaced like a couple of years ago. It looked like they cut up with battery powered saws this weekend, so. Something ridiculous in my opinion, but that's just.
Just to be destructive.
Yeah, just to be destructive.
Or, or they were, or they might have been looking for a water.
They may have been looking for a water, that's the only justification of Harper Master that could have come up with, with someone to. Make that kind of effort, you know what I mean?
It was oddly cut.
But, but there needs to be something, um. And I don't know if we can tie in, because it may be a challenge to tie in, right, right, the network, but we can have a separate network. Um, as long as, and it's a good conversation to have because our village attorney here as well as the board, if they're interested in it. But, um, you know, an endorsement from you would be, you know, would be something that we would continue on with this discussion.
One hundred percent, we have the infrastructure already set up on the avenue.
Yeah.
Um, I guess we could probably use the pavilion to set up more infrastructure, so we have the cameras down there, so.
Right.
So I, I, I'm, I'm assuming this is gonna come at a cost, which is why. I, I was, I would wanted to bring it up now while we're talking about the, the budget, you know, I don't know if we need to. To, to make room for it or find, no?
So it's a capital item.
Yeah.
And then the monitoring fee would be something that we may have to. Uh, find a place in the budget for, but it's a capital item when we're doing stuff like that.
And, 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 and when, when I, uh, when I had the conversation with Jerry earlier, I, I, uh, I said, I think it's important. For the, uh, police department to have real time. Be able to have real time eyes, uh, in, in the park, in the event that something. Terrible or, or, uh, happens there, that you. You're going to the park and you know, you, you, you have eyes on what's go- you, you're not, you're not, you're not trying to figure out, you can look and see what's happening and you can. Direct the officers that way, so if, if that's an additional cost, I think it's, it's worth it to do it upfront. I'll, 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 you know, I'll, uh. I'd, I'd love to hear what, what the other folks on the board feel about that, but I think it's.
I have no problem doing it, we, we can't amend the budget tonight. That, that's, that's not, that's not possible.
And Mayor, it's not an amendment, it would be a capital item that I would bring to the board in a couple of weeks. Or a couple of meetings to say, here, this is what it's going to cost, and then. I don't, I don't have a problem with the monitoring, there won't be a problem with that, we could shift around some, uh, some, some contract services where we need to. I'm not too worried about that.
We currently have that right now with the cameras on Manic Avenue, and we can go online and check and see what's going on before we send officers. So they're not going in there blindly.
I think it's a good idea to.
I mean, I mean, it didn't occur to me until I saw that, that, that damage and I realized that. Nobody can see in there and, uh, you know, they're going down, ma- maybe at night with dark park.
I hope at night.
You know, or, or, uh, or whatever, or something where, you know, I, I, it just seems to me that, to be a prudent, uh.
Two, two years ago, I think, right, maybe, LT, two, three years ago, we had an attempted suicide down there as well.
Yes.
Yeah, seriously, yeah.
That's the, that's the problem, sorry.
People.
We'll address it, we'll address it separately.
That's a good idea, good idea.
I've, I've also imagined cameras might be beneficial for, for insurance rates, because obviously this is gonna be an insurance claim and. You know, now we're, we're addressing it. Also, when you sent us the initial email, you wanted to be sure that there, the motels had camera surveillance, that, am, am I right?
That's what I requested, yes.
Part of it, yeah.
To have cameras, it's a stored video for at least thirty days.
We'll store it for thirty days.
So, remember hotels, are we doing that? This motel's not doing it.
Okay, and, and, yeah, uh, every time I go to, to a real hotel, you know, I know that they, uh, look at my ID.
Yes, and then they want to make a photocopy of that, so case allegation may later on.
Yeah.
Easily identify who occupied this role.
Gotcha. Uh, just stay for one more item, because there's another item that has to do with the police department. Uh, in case anybody on the board has any questions, I don't think we will, uh, increasing project budget for purchase of body worn. And this is, I'm sorry, two D. Uh, increasing project budget for purchase of body worn cameras due to addition of grant money, so it seems to me that we got extra grant money that we didn't know we were gonna get.
Yep.
And we are using that to purchase, uh, more cameras for, for police officers to wear.
Right, so we're just amending, right, then?
Amending the original resolution, increasing the capital budget by thirty-four thousand dollars. Then asking for a for creation from fund balance, because it's a reimbursable grant, somebody's funded.
And we still haven't even gotten the original, the, the.
Uh, we've got forty-four cameras thus far.
Oh, we have gotten them, and we're using them.
We're doing a trial period right now.
Okay.
A few officers and probably about two or three more weeks, we're gonna outfit every officer with a camera.
Cool, thank you.
Thirty-four thousand, what does it do? Like, does it add more cameras or just?
This is, it gives us more flexibility to purchase more cameras in the future, as we.
We're looking to have a total. Over what we have right now, we have forty-four, we have fifty, fifty-one members, we want to have a few more, just in case one breaks.
Yeah, lost, yeah.
Yeah, but we don't even have, we don't even have one for one officer.
And that way you don't.
Need to bulk up.
You got it.
Process for that, right?
Okay.
Alright, so.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, and everybody, so, well, well, while I'm on this, everybody's fine, just being on a regular agenda tonight.
Yes, yes.
Lieutenant, thank you. Alright, we've got some work to do. Uh, let's go back to the top of old business. January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, business recruitment, Village of Manic.
Still waiting, we, we haven't met with the, uh, with, with the, uh, planner yet, so.
Okay, uh. One B legislation regarding the safety and maintenance of utility poles.
The. The local law, the draft local law in front of you, the only item that we, uh, James and I needed to discuss from Mary. Was, uh, item C. We are, um. We are recommending to the board a public utility that installs a new pole within fifteen feet of an existing pole. The reason behind that is that, uh, typically driveway aprons are about twelve to fifteen feet wide. So if there's a case where a driveway, um, a pole is moved because of a driveway apron. So anything within that fifteen feet would, um, would trigger this law. Anything more than that would be probably an alteration in the way. The poles are actually being installed on the street or on the roadway, so.
Fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet, that's, uh, item C. Everything else, James and I read through and really appreciate, uh, Mary and Bob's. Uh, work on this, uh, local law each.
Okay, uh, so we, we, do we need to put it on for two weeks from now? Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah. Regularly two weeks from now.
To schedule a public hearing.
To schedule a public hearing, yeah. Sally, got that? Right. May eighth, we will schedule a public hearing, a public hearing will probably be scheduled for two weeks since, uh, which would be the twenty-second. Lord Willen, preach still rest. Uh, next up is one C. Uh, supporting village staff from harassment and bullying, uh, this was something, uh, I tried to do. Uh. A couple of years ago. Were you here?
I was here.
You were here?
I was, I was here when we came back again, so.
This is the one that I'd asked for advice and counsel on.
Okay, we'll go advice counsel?
Yeah.
Alright, let's go to the sidebar.
Oh, yay.
Come on, counsel.
I thought this was funny. So did I, I'm serious. Thank you so much for that.
Yes. Definitely got my side.
I, my, my.
Alright, I'm ready, bring it on.
Nobody's here. No, no, no.
On TV time. It's our regularly scheduled program. Once we have, we can do stuff on the agenda, it's good stuff.
Well, we scattered the people, we scared them away. Bob, I expected you to look a little bit more tender.
Remember that if you ever need to clear the room. Wouldn't you count to a hundred and come back out of here?
Tricks we learned.
Said you wasn't gonna work.
That's what I thought.
Internet, it's a blessing and a curse.
Two fifty, okay.
Lord.
I want to say what we are.
Thank you.
Okay. So back from the vice of counsel. And, uh. Just so public's aware, any board member, just so every board member's aware. That. During a court meeting. It's always been the, uh. It was been a policy of the board of trustees as long as I've been on. Uh, that if, if a member wanted advice, legal advice on the issue in front of them. They could ask, as Nora just did, go and advise the council. And then we will all. I'll, I'll adjourn the meeting for a minute, and this is in a regular meeting too. So if you're, if you're ever in a situation where you feel you're not sure, you know, if, if we're getting into a precarious legal situation. Feel free to exercise that.
The equivalent of a sidebar during a trial.
Kind of, yeah.
Okay.
And that's always, you know, I don't know what other communities, but I go in the Village of Manic.
Okay.
Going way back, we've always done it.
Nice to meet.
Alright, I'm gonna read this. Whereas. The Village of Manic is committed to the safety and security of its employees, and whereas. This commitment applies not only to interactions among village staff. Who receive annual training under many forms of workplace violence involving harassment and bullying, but the general public. Who are expected to treat employees of the Village of Manic with the respect and dignity. With which they would expect to be treated, and whereas the village staff. Compiles the people of all ages from teenagers who gain valuable experience working in the summer recreation programs. Laborers in the Department of Public Works for maintaining the village infrastructure, the parks department that maintains and enhances the village parks and public spaces. There's the police department, firefighters and building department staff that protect the life and property of village residents. And the highly trained professionals that oversee village operations. And whereas, there have been several instances in which members of the public have exhibited a lack of stability. With the village staff, including use of profanity, demeaning and insulting language and correspondence, and threatening of employment. Among other examples, and whereas. While conflicts between the public and municipal employees are not endemic to the Village of Manic. The board of trustees, as elected leaders of the community, have a responsibility to represent their constituents, which includes the professional staff. That provides municipal services to the community, ensure that they are not bullied or harassed in the performance of their duties. Now therefore be resolved that the board of trustees herein expresses its support for the village staff. To work in an environment free from harassment and bullying, and requests that the general public remain civil at all times in its own to, interactions. With the professional staff. And just so people know, there's no mention of elected officials here, so you could treat us any way you want to.
No.
Uh, and I, I would hope that we could put that on for two weeks from now.
I have, yeah, yeah, I do, first of all, we're, we are elected officials, but we're also employees of the village. And, um, I think it should go two ways, this should be, I think this should, this also should suggest that. We, I'm not, and I'm not talking about village staff, but that the board of trustees is also, needs to abide by this and we need to be civil to everyone. And polite to everyone, and that is not always the case here, so I think that this should be a universal anti-bullying, like, a, a universal. Anti-bullying endeavor and not just, not just criticizing the public, because I think we have been at fault.
So then I will also say to make it really universal, that if we're all considered village staff. That is not just the board, but it's also employees, so if everything is going both ways, everything is going both ways. Because you, you, you kind of omitted that not the staff, but us as a board, but staff and board. Just as we're saying, the public should be, um, respectful, we and the staff should be just as respectful.
I, I would agree, I would, I would just also say, I think that the staff is respectful. And, and, and the genesis of this was some bad behavior, but I agree with you.
But you also could say, I could also say that my, I am respectful. So then I don't even include myself into the language of being disrespectful, but universally, like you stated, always, good job.
Free, on a regular meeting for this week or as of the next meeting?
But you wanted, it, it, Nora's talking about changing it.
Um, uh, I'm fine with the, the way it is, uh, I, um. I, uh, am happy to defend whatever, uh, whatever, uh, I say to people who have, um. Uh, may have provoked me and, uh, and, uh. I don't know how the resolution would change that, I, I think, uh. I think elected officials are a thing apart, I don't think we can, we can expect not to be, uh, I don't like being abused, but, uh, but it. Abuse comes with the, with the territory, so, uh, I can, uh, you know, I don't have a thick, a thin skin. I'll take it. But don't, uh, don't dish it out if you can't take, that, that, that's all I would say to, to anybody who would, who would, who would do that. And that, and I think that's what, a lot of what the objections that we're seeing on social media are, people who, uh, like to be abusive, but don't like to get. Uh, like, like to be answered, so I'm, uh, I'm, I'm fine with protecting the staff. Which is what this is about, because people, um, uh, there are certain people who are, feel they're in. Because people, um, uh, there are certain people who are, feel they are entitled to, uh, to, uh. Treat their own opinions as if they are law and, and want to abuse the staff who are just enforcing. Uh, our directives or the, or the, the laws and regulations of this, uh, of this village as they are interpreted by this board. And, uh, and, and not, uh. And I, I think it's fine the way it is. I don't think it needs to be changed.
Well, I, from my point of view, and I, I have, uh. The times when I have gotten my voice elevated with members of the community. Where in my opinion, when members of the community were, you know, acting in a purely political vein. And not acting in, uh, you know, the, the bringing to the board, an issue for the board to address. Uh, and if you're gonna act, you know, in a, in a political vein, you know, then you, those are the consequences. And truthfully, I regret sometimes, uh, having lost my composure, but I'm human and, uh, you know, I, I. I've been doing this a long time. And I can see and suss out, uh, when people are. Doing things and making actions that are based upon, you know, political considerations. And when you do that, you know, you're, 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 you're in the game. And I, I wish I hadn't raised my voice at times, but I do, I'm human. Uh, you know, I, I don't, I don't think anybody, uh, has taken as much, uh. Untrue abuse in the past couple of years as I've seen, you know, as I've seen read about myself. Uh, about my personal life and, uh, stuff like that, but I realize that, you know, uh, this is the life I chose. And, uh, you know, I, I, I deal with what I gotta deal with. And I try to do what's best for the village. And, uh, I could say I will try and, uh. Be more even in my temperament, but, uh, this isn't about me and, uh. You know, that even saying it's about how we treat others is part of, I think, you know. Another, you know, whatever, uh, but I, I think it's, 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 this was brought by me to show the staff. That we support them and we protect them. And, uh. We had staff leave because they felt unsupported and unprotected in passports. Uh, we had staff, uh, maligned, uh, without, you know, any. Intervention by the passports. And that's what's inspired me to, uh, bring this forward. Because, you know, there's, there's people here who are doing this for their living. You know, I'm not doing this for my living. This is, you know, like I said, this is the choice I made. And I live with my choices. Uh, but, you know, uh, people who come into work every day and trying to work a nine to five and, uh, just, uh. Feed their families and do the right thing, uh, shouldn't, uh. Have to take some of the abuse they've had to take. And, you know, to have aspersions cast upon their motives and upon their truthfulness and upon their, uh. Your character. And, you know. Listen, people don't like me. If people want to get rid of me, there's a, there's a, a tool and it's called an election. And, you know, I, I have stated that this is my last election in the village of America. Uh, and there's nobody running against me. There's, there's people trying to kick me off the ballot. Uh, people who don't believe in democracy. But, uh, there's nobody running against me. So. You know, if, if, if the voters, uh, felt that, uh. I needed to be replaced, I, I would have a serious challenge. So I, I'm fine for putting it on the agenda for two weeks.
I am as well.
We'll find either way. Um, I just want to also be mindful of. You know, there's, there's many ways that people can be harassed and there's many ways that people can be bullied. It's not necessarily the aggression that is, um, so. Is necessarily seen. But there's also ways that people could be harassed and bullied that is not necessarily always visibly seen and heard. So be mindful of how we define bullying and harassing. Because it can go all ways. That people don't often think about. So be mindful.
This seems to be fairly, uh. Pedestrian. It seems like just, uh, we're defending the staff and telling people, don't abuse the staff. You got a problem, come talk to us. So that's, uh, that's what we're telling people and, uh, don't, don't, don't. Don't tee off on the person who's at the buildings department because you're frustrated. All right. That's, that's essentially what we're saying. Or a police officer who is writing you a ticket or, uh, somebody who's writing a parking, uh, a parking ticket or, uh. Or an inspector or anybody who works for this village.
Or, or somebody working in a box department, you're trying to do their job.
Yeah.
We've had people, uh. Running their dogs off leash when they were told by box department employees, uh, that that was not allowed. They had a diatribe of profanities thrown at them.
And this is, uh, just a request. So there you go.
But the staff, when are we supporting?
Yes, and, and, and we do. So, uh, I think we should put the, we should, we should make the, uh, I think we should take that this small step. It's not a big deal. Uh, I don't think we need to.
I believe it. So I think this is gonna be on two weeks. Climate Action Plan, we, we had a very nice presentation. Uh, from the, uh, Miniatur Environment. Building and Fire Code Administration. How we do with that, Bob?
Decide how you want to try and approach this very large.
Everybody had a chance to look it over? What do you think?
I've looked it over. I've talked with Carolina, who I know she did a deep dive in the previous community she worked in. She worked with a lawyer on it. And of course, it's different for every community in our code to kind of.
We've never not used the mic as I can.
Okay. So we're using the, I mean, Carolina, who did a deep dive. Okay, thank you. We did a deep dive in her previous community. Really said that she's comfortable with what's going on here and that it's, you know, it's. Most of it's required by New York State. So, and if there's a problem, Carolina will let us know. And then we will have to make a revision, but she feels that. This is a law she can work with. And I think it's, it's, you know, we're not administering the building code.
So you were aware. The state, as is previously said to in memoriam, the state regulations required change. And then that every municipality adopts something like this, their mineral requirements. So we started with a model code provision. That the state provided. And then adapted it to our code and how we've been doing it. Including all the things that the state required. We also made some changes to our code. This one, if you adopt it, this will make some changes to our code. We incorporated a lot of the permits and other licensing and those sorts of things that we granted by. First of all, the manager's office incorporated into the building department. To make that the enforcement department, essentially anything having to do with how land is used. Because the other departments are not equipped to follow up and enforce. These kinds of permanent, or even, even to the time permit requirements generally. So that's what this does. Jerry was following that, Caroline was following that. And, uh, they're gonna be, if you adopt this, there are more changes that are going to come. We're gonna have to, there's a lot more changes that are coming. We're gonna have to first, is take these various sections. For example, one example was the motel law. That was decided and discussed earlier. To modify that, to make the change in the police department department and specifically reference the enforcement authority in this law. As, as the way that's enforced. So that then becomes something that's not being done in the clerk's office anymore, but being done out of the building. As part of the overall transformation to code that I've been working on. And then now that Ryder's back as a planner, I expect to be able to work with him. To, uh, move on to other parts of the code. Most particularly, I, I would like to put before you next. Is the unification of the notification convention. And let's process for land use applications. Not to reduce any of the subsequent requirements, not to reduce any of the approvals that have to be maintained. But to try to make it easier. Not only for people who are seeking approvals. But for the public to follow, the residents, other residents to follow those approvals through the process. So that, uh, they can pay attention to what's going on and participate when they feel it's appropriate. What I'm hoping we can do, and this needs to be worked out. I'm hoping that what we can do is use some more modern technology than was available when these laws were adopted. To, to try to facilitate that process. And I'm, I'm hopeful that the software that we use now can do that. This is what I'm, I'm trying to do with the code. If you go full bore with this, then we will periodically bring, bring in these other sections and update them. And fold them into which enforcement.
So this is like a building block?
Yes, this is the fundamental block. Because it's the enforcement division. It captures all of the things, the state added a lot of things that have to be done. Bridge inspections, for instance. Now, same party. Um, we have to be able to work on. So it adds all the things the state requires and incorporates the things that the village enforces as well.
But doesn't an engineer do a bridge?
Yeah, okay. But, but it's, it's the responsibility of the building inspector to make sure it gets done. There are a number of things that require expert.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
Inspections.
Inspections.
But the building inspector ultimately signs off on those experts.
That's correct.
Like if you have an electrical, uh, uh, somebody come in and do an electrical inspection, the building block signs off.
That's right. Somebody has to have, has to be in charge. It has to have a checklist. And say, everything needing to be done was done. And sort of how, when you're building something. These certificate of occupancy becomes sort of the gateway. That's where you check everything and make sure everything is done in accordance with the approvals and plans and so.
Yeah. Uh, is everybody okay with having us on for two weeks or making, uh, two weeks, uh, scheduling?
Public hearing?
Public hearing.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, we have, we have, uh, Neil and Mr. Cutler, uh, on in the waiting room. And where were they? What, what, what item?
They are all right on the second.
Tuesday. Tuesday, Tuesday. Final funding for complete comprehensive, sorry. Uh. Hey Neil.
Hi.
Hey Craig, Greg Cutler.
Hi, everyone.
Hey Neil, did you ever watch, uh, Ted Lasso?
Yeah. You know, I don't have HBO, so, uh, I did catch one episode maybe.
It's on, uh. Did anybody ever tell you, you have a, a striking resemblance to the gentleman that stars, one of the stars of the show?
Hmm, first per, no, first time. I'll have to watch. No, I haven't heard anything. Nobody said that before.
Oh, the, what do you talk, the, uh, the coach, the, the coach that goes to the other team. Oh, yeah, yeah. I'll see a little bit of that.
Yeah. That's funny.
Nice.
Yeah. I think. It's Apple TV. Yeah, it's Apple TV, Apple.
Oh, Apple TV, right. Yeah, I don't have Apple TV. So, but, uh, I'll have to, I'll have to check that out. Thanks, thanks.
Okay, so. Okay, where were we at? Two C updating village code. No, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting all lost here. Okay. Final, final funding to complete comprehensive plan of date, two C.
Right.
Mayor, I added that this week in, uh, agenda review, because that's code for, we better not have another.
Yeah.
Post. I guess it's not exactly code. Pretty direct.
All right, Neil, why, why don't you take us through it, buddy?
Okay, so the, 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 let me. Uh, open up my. Okay. So there's, there's, I guess there's, there's two things I, uh, I want to bring up. The first is, uh, I'm gonna share my screen. The first memo, this is, this is a request. Uh, this is the miniature, the, the request for additional funds to complete the comprehensive plan through adoption. And I, I haven't stopped working. I'm gonna keep working. If you don't pay me, you know, this needs to be finished and I want to see it done. I've been working this for a while. But it is a request, uh, uh, just for a little backstory, uh, the, our very initial proposal to, uh, to, to continue completing the comprehensive. Uh, plan was for a, a larger sum, thirty-eight thousand. And the BOT at the fell, at the time felt that the budget was, was high because of the, the process would likely be quick in their estimation. Um, and I, you know, that's fair enough. I, and as a result, we submitted a proposal that was reduced, a reduced budget to twenty-two thousand. And that was the budget that was accepted.
You'd use, uh, old studies to, to make the. Right, they, 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 that's what it was. Go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just wondered.
Oh, oh, sorry. So, uh, so. But now we've gotten to this place and so it's, it's taken a lot more time than, than the BOT initially, it's anticipated. Um, to, to do everything, meaning, meeting with all the, all the, the planning board, the volunteer committees, uh, reconnecting with residents through the survey. Reorganizing and producing the next, the basically the fourth, the fifth draft, which is what you have now. And so this, this proposal is to, uh, is for request for ninety-five hundred, ninety-five sixty to. Complete the process through the adoption. Um, and so that's, that's the first part of, of, of this, is this administrative. Uh, matter of terms of the, the budget for the comprehensive plan.
Jerry, Jerry, do you think that that's a fair proposal?
It is. That's, we had a meeting, Neil, Greg and I had a meeting earlier this afternoon to go over this. To make sure that, um, what. Neil is asking for will get us to the finish line.
Okay, so this, this will be the last ask.
This will be the last ask, yeah, yeah. And, uh.
Neil, Neil, I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you a piece of advice.
Sure.
As someone that's been a shop steward for twenty-five years, negotiated, uh, on negotiating committee of my union's contracts many, many times. Don't start the discussion why I'm gonna do this whether you pay me or not.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's, uh, that's great advice. That's good advice.
Not your best negotiation position.
That's not, that's not at all. You're right, you're right.
I'm moving up there.
Yeah. Well, I guess what I meant to say was I've kept working. I've kept working. I haven't stopped working. That's, that's what I should have said. I haven't stopped working because of. So.
Because other boards aren't as nice.
Hmm, but I'm sure, yeah. Uh, yeah, I, I've met some other boards, yeah. So, so, so that's the first, the first item, uh, consideration. And the second item is just to confirm. Uh, well, I think maybe there's three items. The second item is just to look at the, what I sent, uh. Briefly what I sent on Friday to the Board of Trustees. And that was two things. Um, I had sent you several weeks ago, just the comments that, uh, people submitted on, on the March first draft. I sent you this whole table and there was nothing in the, the response and outcome column. Uh, we've reviewed all the comments and where necessary, where there was a good point, whether there's something I need to be corrected. Or looked into a little closely, uh, it's now included in the, uh, the, the third column and. And it says, it, it essentially responds to their, their question. Okay, yes, we will make this correction on the map. Chapter five will include recommendations. And so that's important. Um, so you can see at least how we reviewed, uh, how we respond to teach you these comments. Um, and there was, there was one or two items which I really didn't have enough information on. And that's, uh, and that, that's indicated where it says, you know, need to consult with the village planner. Uh, on a few of the, uh, some of from the trap, some of the traffic commission, uh, comments. Um, I, I feel like I needed to consult with, uh, Greg. I think it was residential parking because I didn't know enough about that to be able to provide any response. But so that's, that's what, uh. That's the, the first thing that was included in the attachment i- in the email. And the second thing was the revised draft of the comp plan. And so what I did was based on those comments and the responses, I made revisions to the comp plan and sent you the, the latest version, which is April seventeenth. Now, one thing which, which I, I, I know I had done previously. Um, in order that you can compare the previous draft with the current draft, it would be helpful if I had. You know, I usually, I think I did some redlining in, in, uh, in the past where you could see clearly what was something that was new that was introduced as a result of the comments. Um, uh, and so that's, that's something which, which, which I, I could do. Uh, so that you know, to go sifting around to find out how the, how I, how we responded to the comment and incorporate it into the actual draft of this April seventeenth draft. Um, so that's, that's the next, that's the, and then I want to talk about. The schedule, uh, we had, uh. Uh, Mayor, you had responded to one of my emails and said. Uh, March, May twenty-second is the right date for the public hearing. And I think Greg, in terms of the process of what, what did you, what did, what did we talk about earlier today? You had suggested that that should be.
Yeah, I suggested that you notice the public hearing as a board as, as early as possible. So that we can notify the county of the, you know, with the GML, the. So that we can notify the county of the, you know, with the GML, the referral of the comp plan to the county, get comments back sooner than later. Um, and I think we were looking at, uh, May eighth as the date to schedule the public hearing. So I would suggest.
May twenty second, actually, May twenty second.
No, to schedule the public hearing.
Oh, to schedule, I'm sorry. Got it, got it.
Right. Is, is everybody on the board okay with scheduling a public hearing on May eighth or May twenty second?
Yes, yes.
Yes, but does that give time enough for the county to review?
Um, they typically require ten days before. They like thirty days before on bigger things. We can, we can send it to them. Knowing that you're planning to schedule it for May twenty two, um, as soon as tomorrow, right Neil?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, so just having, having, you know, an understanding that, that that's the anticipated date. We can send the full package to the county.
Right, and that gives us way more than thirty days.
Yep. Uh, no, about, about a month, a little less than a month, but it should be fine for their review.
Herein, I'm thinking that, uh, today is the tenth. That was, uh, let's be, sorry.
Well, it's twenty fourth. So, uh, in, in addition to this calendar, we, we had, uh, there's one more opportunity and if you look in the May, uh, either to have a special BOT work session, uh, which is what we've had in the past once before, to talk about the comp plan. So, you know, if there's any comments from the BOT village planner. Um, if it's not a special work session, maybe it's something that's part of the, the May eighth regular BOT work session. But I think there's, there is one more opportunity, uh, for the, uh, for board members and village planner to, to make any comments. I guess there really hasn't been a, a, a formal point where the board has been able to make any comments or questions. And that could be the, that could be the, the place where that's done.
Well, well, we'll put you on for the, uh, work session on the eighth.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll give you like an hour.
Okay, that's good. And, okay.
We don't want to try and do it different, right?
I'm, I'm, I'm away before that a lot.
He would be old business on May eights, right?
Yeah.
Meeting full business, so right at the beginning. Like, gives us time.
You can also advise the staff that, uh, we'll just try and hold off until the second.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we can, we can manage that. We'll give you enough time.
Okay. Uh, anything else from you guys?
Nothing with the housing?
Nope, that's all taken care of.
Got it.
All right, gentlemen, thank you. Thank you. And Greg, welcome back.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll be, um, in person at eight o'clock, so I'll see you guys soon.
All right, awesome. Looking forward to it. You know, I, I, we, we have a gentleman in the audience, uh, our, our engineer Vito who's here for, uh, three E. Gino, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Jesus, I'm sorry. Uh, year one, uh, of annual sewer inspection and repair program. Do you know the mic shows it? I apologize.
That's okay. I do want to point out, Mayor, that today is her nanny, our old engineer's birthday.
Okay.
Should we ever had cake?
We should have. So the village of Maranek has developed the, uh, capacity management, operation, maintenance, C-MO document. Uh, as part of the settlement, save the sound, uh, part of the C-MO, the village's development annual inspection. Uh, repair program, which includes cleaning and inspecting approximately ten percent of the village, uh, sewers and manholes each year. To identify any infrastructure they need to repair, sources of inflow and infiltration, or maintenance issues that need to be addressed. Uh, the village owns and maintains approximately two hundred and fifty thousand linear feet of sidewalks, of, of sewers. Uh, therefore approximately twenty five thousand linear feet needs to be done each year. So Arcadis has provided a proposal to do the first, uh, section, the first ten percent of our sewers. Uh, broken up into, uh, three tasks. Uh, first task is going to be cleaning and inspection coordination, where the manholes or the sewers will be cleaned. And then a CCTV camera will be used to inspect, uh, twenty five thousand linear feet of, uh, pipes. Uh, the little will be, the deliverable will be a complete set of CCTV logs. Uh, task two will be the manhole inspection, which is going to run concurrently with the, partially concurrently, uh, with the sewer inspections. Uh, one hundred and thirty manholes will be inspected. I'll be recorded digitally on tablets. Um, photos will be taken and, uh, conditions will be, uh, the conditions will be assessed and recommendations made. Part of this also, they will provide the TPW and our engineering staff, uh, a couple of days of training. So then in the future, we, as I built the department, I intend to fully take this, uh, work completely over, so we don't have to source this out to a consultant. The third task will be the reporting. Arcadis will review all the CCTV footage, all the manhole inspections, and make recommendations of where we need to, um, repair, replace, or, uh, make repairs to the pipes and manholes themselves.
Can I just ask you a question about, and, and you taught me the last time we talked, man, it's actually called the chimney.
Uh, the, yeah, the, the section of the manhole, so as he comes down, it comes as a chimney, correct?
And when, when would those roughly put in the village of Maranek?
Our back is, I think we are utility maps go back to the thirties. So, you know, you could imagine sometimes part of this problem, we have the grout between the bricks sometimes over time.
And that's a regular red brick.
Exactly, it's common brick. Uh, I know, so, you know, a lot of those are.
Okay, when we redo them, right? So you, you, you point the brick or do you, you like co- coated?
We coated, it'll be coated. It'll be a cementitious fiber coating. Uh, sometimes it could be just point repairs. It can be. If the condition is assessed to be adequate, it could just be pointed repairs that are kind of close up to the cover or the casting, uh, or if they're bound in good condition, they're, they're left. Most of the time, you know, it could be if there's a seriously deteriorated condition, it's a, it's a coating.
So this is a, another piece of infrastructure that we have that's getting on to a hundred years old.
Well, it's, it's still the same sewer system that we had just completed or we will be completing the final phase.
Right.
The B two seven, nine and ten areas is, is going to be starting shortly. This is now the agreement that we're going to maintain the long term maintenance.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you, I'm sorry for.
That's okay.
Uh, I said, so Mayor and Board, um, we would end up starting, um, this program with the area around the West Basin where we TV and repaired in the two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen uh, timeframe.
Correct.
And then move on to, as we do, um, and inspect ten percent every year to complete, to complete the entire, um, review in ten years. Move into the areas that we're currently repairing right now. So we don't anticipate a lot of work in the future because we're doing a lot of work now. But we will, of course, attach a few things and potentially, you know, these, um, the inspection will never necessarily change until, uh, Gino takes it over in his office. But as far as repairs and what we find, we shouldn't have much, uh, going forward. So, but this is a commitment that we had to make, that we negotiated Bob and I extensively with Save the Sound extensively.
And when the ten years is up, you just start again. I mean, at some point, that's the part you'll be taking in where we'll, we'll be doing the the filming and the.
Correct. So what I'd like to do is the first phase, the first year of work side by side with Arcadis. Uh, possibly the second year until we start to add, you know, an assistant village engineer and, and staff. Uh, to have them train and then hopefully by the third year. Uh, can we develop a joint effort or just completely take over the, uh, the entire program?
Some of this will be done with the town, uh, because we have a, we have a fifty percent share in the town as a video. Um, store, you know, the, the video equipment, um, but of course we have to pay the town staff a little bit for that, but, um, we can't. We can't ask the town to do the full twenty five thousand linear feet because it's just too much and they have their own responsibilities. So there'll be some that the town, um, our equipment that we own with the town and their staff will do as well as our private contractor.
Can the town teach those staff to use it?
They can, but what we decided was that, um, since they're already trained and, um, already, uh, familiar with the, with the truck and with the equipment, they would do it because it would be much, it would go much quicker than if they were training us. Um, and they maintain the truck and all of that stuff. So our agreement, the last year we did some work with them. Didn't cost us too much, right? A couple thousand dollars. Typically, they, they can move along pretty quickly. Um, and the outside contractor, it depends on how much they can get done each day, but the outside contractors are probably around twenty four, twenty five hundred dollars a day. So this, this video will cost, there'll be a commitment, um, of the sewer fund to, uh, to keep this going, but it is a requirement of, of.
Are you ready?
They are agreeing, yeah.
And?
I was gonna call something else.
Manhole covers, manhole, uh, like every five hundred feet?
The distance between varies.
Very.
This is between, yeah, each, each, uh, manhole can vary. Um, be sure, there's, you know, it could be a short run, like for example, between the complete sewer replacement on Center Avenue. The first segment would be only sixty feet. The next, uh, section manhole to manhole was over a hundred and sixty and seventy linear feet. So they vary based on that.
And you, you, you put a, and I'm just, I, I am actually fascinated with this. Uh, I, I think if you, if you have a bend, do you put a manhole at the bend or do you, is that mandatory? Uh, because I would think at the, at a bend, right, or, or, or at a ninety or?
Oh, uh, you know, it, well, it's basically, it's, it's, it's kind of curved. It's, it's not really a ninety degree. It's, it's a curved section inside. When you pop the manhole cover in, you'll see a trough through there and it will.
No, but what I meant was i- if, if you have, let's just say, one pipe intersecting with another pipe.
Oh, correct. Yeah, no, uh, yeah, we have that, you know, the, the sewer laterals intersect from, coming from individual homes. Yeah, it's a ninety degree. It's, it's, it comes in.
Okay.
You don't have a, a manhole at every sewer lateral.
No, 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 no.
So it's the building block of civilization. Get rid of your waste.
Yeah. But, you know, we have a system, two hundred and fifty linear feet. So it requires some attention.
Every. Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Sorry, two hundred and fifty thousand linear feet.
It's a lot of sewer. Uh, okay, is there any else? Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get home to your family. And Gino, uh, uh, is also a village resident too.
Yes.
And so, uh, we, we hired a lot of folks who, uh, were a real stake in the community.
Happy to be here.
Happy to have you. Put that on your commute. All right, uh, one F, establishing meat department. We, we ready for that?
No, I was a bit tied up last week being, uh, re- deployed to the third floor.
All right, we'll keep that on.
Yeah, we're gonna have to talk about that, this. Not, not that, well, not what you, but this, this in particular because yeah, okay, I thank you.
Always good to keep talking.
Yeah.
I, I don't, but tonight's regular meeting, uh, revise new fees for street opening permits, front yard collection of food scraps and a dog park. Jerry, what tells? Dan, your turn to shine.
No, they were, um, uh, because of the, uh, error by the person who prepared the fee schedule. Uh, so they were, which is, uh, the deputy village manager. Uh, there were a couple of, uh, fees that were, uh, omitted, uh, and then some others that we, uh, discussed with the board about adding, uh, the first of which was, um, the fees for the, uh, front yard collection of food scraps. Uh, we're proposing to charge a fee of essentially one dollar a week. Uh, so said at fifty two dollars for the year. You know, I know that, uh, uh, back when we had some enterprising, uh, teenagers from, uh, who was Ryanek were
Ryanek.
picking it up. They were charging more than fifty two dollars a year, I believe. So, uh, we think that there is a, uh, uh, a, 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 a market for this fee. Um, there were some street opening permits, which I believe, uh, James discussed, uh, Chief Party, General Formative Public Works Party, whichever you prefer, at his budget meeting. Uh, and, uh, we've recognized those in the schedule. Uh, and then finally, the, there were the, uh, fees for the access to the dog park. Uh, it's composed of two fees, one of which is the state mandated fee for dog registrations and that varies based on whether the, uh, the dog is spayed or neutered. And then a charge for the E, which I believe was what, uh, twenty four dollars?
Twenty six.
Twenty six. So, uh.
But is so, if, if somebody's dog is already licensed.
Yeah, they won't have to pay that.
They, they just pay for the fob.
Yeah, that's correct. And if they lose the fob, they would have to pay a replacement fee, which is pretty standard, you know, for instance, uh, someone's, you know, parking from a guest store they need to replace or they need a car.
Yeah, let me ask, if somebody, somebody loses a fob, right? Uh, do we then cancel that fob so that it can't be used? Yeah, okay.
Every fob has a, uh, its own ID number and that's how it's registered.
Okay, so then you say bang, uh, disable that.
That's the same.
And, and the, the increase, the workman increases for the street opening hasn't been increased in many years. Uh, you know, apparently six years. Uh, it's, it's a, it's a minimal increase. It's going from two hundred to two hundred and fifty feet, up to twenty five linear feet. Uh, then, um, once you go over that, that's, uh, it goes from a dollar fifty to three dollars. Whereas to say, you know, two hundred, two fifty for, sorry, rough repair, uh, street opening permit. And, uh, three dimensional fifty square feet of street opening, it goes to thirty fifty again.
So this brings us in line with other communities.
It does, and, you know, we're going to be, uh, capturing some additional revenue. We're starting to, everything we've been able to discuss and, uh, with, uh, the general form.
We weren't always charging that fee, right?
Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. Now we do.
Fair enough, that's what I want to hear.
And, um, given that this is budget season, uh, we've asked that the board consider this tonight.
Okay, so Mayor, I want to add just one or two things. Fifty two dollars is the same charge that the village of Scarsdale charges their residents to their food, food scrap recycling. So that's where, we're gonna go with a higher number. We, um, a couple of CTF, CFE members cornered make, and we negotiated fifty two dollars. Um, and on the dog licenses, we do not have a fee for out of town dog park, bark park users.
Will we eventually?
Let's do this.
I mean, if we're charging our residents, I'm, yeah, we're gonna charge other people, right?
No, there's gonna be a fee, it's different.
Different, yeah, but.
As of right now, if a town would not be able to access the dog park because it's just for village residents. But of course, that study can be brought up.
That's going to be an issue. Um, uh, my, my problem with the, I, I think the dog park access should be included with the dog, uh, uh, license, period. Um, uh, I think it, it, I don't know, but do you think most dogs in the, in the village are licensed?
Well, we, we won't sell the, you won't give them.
No.
A fob unless they.
So most dogs are currently not licensed at all. And, 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 and a lot of people will, you know, I, I think we should encourage everybody, every dog to have a license today.
If they're not using a park, why would they need to?
Well, I mean, you, you, by law, you have.
It's supposed to be, you're supposed to be licensed now, it's a law.
Yeah. But, and that's part of the rules and regulations that we're looking to.
So, so, I think there must be a number between, uh, thirty and, uh, and, uh, fifty six or whatever, uh, 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 that would, uh, would, would cover that. Whoever, whoever registers their dog has access to the, to the, uh, to the dog park.
But, 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 but you have, you have to, that's a state, a state number. We don't get that number. We don't get the thirty dollars. That all goes to the state.
We get, we get no, no money from, from, uh?
We keep everything but one dollar per dog. And this year, the way that it's worked out.
We keep everything?
We keep everything but one dollar per dog.
So we do get money from the dog licenses?
Yes, everything but one dollar.
I don't want the state.
The one dollar goes, one dollar per license goes to the state.
Okay.
We keep everything else. And this year it's worked out perfectly because our dog licenses expire in May. So we held off on sending out the renewals until we got the fobs, which we got today. And the board talks about the rules and regulations that need to be adopted by, by a law. So we are scheduling the public hearing so that they can be adopted on May eighth. On May ninth, we will send out all the dog license renewals. But anyone coming in to renew their dog license can buy a fob at the same time and then can go on May twentieth.
I'm thinking about people who've never gotten their dogs licensed.
I don't know how you find those people.
Well, will you find them when, when they, when they, uh, try to use the dog park? For one thing, but, but I think anybody who, who's getting the license should, should, uh, should get the, uh, should get, get the fob automatically. And I think that, uh, that we should, we, we, we should, we should price it in.
And so, but setting up the separate fees allows us to provide a license for someone who doesn't want you to dog park and doesn't get a key fob, doesn't get a fob. As well as, you know, making sure that we have a fee for the fob. So we, we're just setting up a schedule. How we add that up is either. As well as, you know, making sure that we have a fee for the fob, so we we're just setting up a schedule, how we add that up is either fifty or fifty six dollars. Right, you don't need to have. So I can tell you when I, the other dog park that I built. Mm-hmm. We went from a hundred. Licensed dogs to four hundred and fifty licensed dogs in one year.
Mm-hmm.
Because they wanted to use the dog park.
Yes.
Right, so that's the incentive, you wanna use the dog park, you have to have your dog license, a lot of people don't have their dog license.
What what happens now if if a dog is involved in, let's say, some issue? In a, in a, in another park or on the street or whatever, and the police show up and the dog isn't licensed?
The owner would be some.
They take away his car.
What? No, no, no.
I said they take away his car.
His car if his dog isn't licensed?
But the owner would be cited for not having.
All right, so that that that's what I'm saying, I think we need to be encouraging people to license their dogs.
I think we do it with the dog park. That's why we want the attendant, that's why we want to advertise this, that's why we want to send it out. Because if you wanna use the dog park, and a lot of people do, that may not have had their license, their dog license. We can bulk up and increase the dog licenses by allowing them to use their dog park if they want to.
And I.
I understand that.
Yeah. I think what Jerry's saying is, we can't charge more, there's a license fee that's set by the state, we can't increase that, it's a flat figure. So we can't charge more for that. And let's say you're somebody who does, and so if you wanna, if you just wanna let people use the dog park for free, then that's another, that we haven't put that in the budget, so we have to think about that.
No, we have to, we've hoped to call it at least up to five, we're not really, so if a fob costs us sixteen dollars each. It it's really ten bucks a year to use the dog park for residents, you can't beat that, right, so.
And if you have, let's say you have two dogs. You you only have to get one fob, you know, so it's it's sort of, and and if you don't have, if you don't wanna use, there are people who don't wanna use a dog park. And they may not wanna pay an additional fee to offset it, so I think it's it's, I think it's modest and.
In the past, Lou, we may have, I don't know, I haven't been around that long. Staff knocking on people's door, or doors to see if they have a dog barking dog at their house. And we check to see based on that, right?
We really don't, we're not trying to do that.
That's something that other communities have done.
We're not doing that.
They would go around, if dogs does bark and then that address doesn't have a license attached to it, then they would be sentenced. So other than that, I'm not really sure what we can do.
Well, I.
Not here trying to police like that, I hope not.
Well, I I I I just think, okay, I I I'll. I would love to see the 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 uh, they come in, uh, it's forty five dollars. And uh, do you do you want a fob, you get it if you want it, yes or no, you don't want it, you don't get it, if you want it, you you know what I'm saying?
No, no, you can't, you have to charge twenty four and thirty based on the state fee, can't change, can't.
Yeah.
Can't deviate from that.
You can't deviate.
No, there's a state fee set by the state.
All right.
You can charge additional for a fob.
I don't think it's a lot of, you know, I don't think.
I don't think it's a lot of money, no, but I think uh uh everybody should be included, uh, whatever, okay, all right.
I just wanted to have a question, on the make the opening date, they will, people will be able to go in and get, if they want their dog to be licensed, they'd say it's not licensed, they could do both. Processes there that first day, correct?
I can't speak for the clerk's office, but I think so.
No, they they have to provide the proper document, but they have to provide the proper documentation for the dog in order for it to get the license.
Got it.
Which means we need the vaccination records and all that.
We can't have cash there.
Got it.
If you come with a check or with the exact amount, then we can give them their license and their fob that day, and they have the documentation needed. If not, they can come in on Monday, that's on a Saturday. They can come in on Monday if they don't have the the correct amount of money.
So what I'm hearing is that you think this is the simplest way to do it.
Yeah, this will get the most licenses we've ever had in the history of America.
Okay.
No doubt in my mind.
Good job, but um, question, going back to allowing other neighborhoods to um use utilize the park, do other um, other. Places who have dog pa- dog parks, do they charge more for out um, outside residents? Or do they charge the same?
I don't know. Um, look, some are free.
Harrison charges more, Neurashell charges more.
Yeah, and just.
And some will just leave the gate open and anybody who wants to visit, so.
Yeah.
Um, typically, um, Leilani, our process has been that we've always charged out of town residents more.
Okay.
Because they're not taxpayers here.
Right.
But we have services and not services facilities that they could, you know, enjoy, right, but.
Well, so why don't we, why don't we set up a fee for out of towners, or 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 we, do we not wanna go there yet until we see how popular it is?
I don't wanna, I don't think we should go there yet, I think it should be, if this opens in May, I think we should at least give it the summer, just to see how. Popular our dog park is for our residents, and if we see it doesn't have the, you know, right. Volume that we that we wanna see, I think then we can, we should think about opening up, but I think at least for launch, just because we don't know what it's gonna be like, it should just be for residents.
If it's wildly popular, like we think it's gonna be, we may not have room for others.
Yeah. Give him a little time to be jealous.
We'll see, yeah, we'll see. Just ease into it.
I'm serious.
All right, fees.
All right, uh, professional service AKRA. Uh, to service to install upgrades sidewalks in the vicinity of St. Vito's in the First Baptist Church, we talked about this before, uh, but, go ahead.
It, we have Mayor, and in fact, um, we have almost three hundred uh signed petitions from the parishioners at St. Vito's. As well as many, many requests. Probably mostly directed to the uh Deputy Village Manager, um, from um. The congregation and pastor of First Baptist. Um, these are both located and received significant damage during Idah. Um, and I know that. Some of the repairs were of course paid for by FEMA and others, but um, there's a lot of infrastructure um outside that continues to be. Not in the best condition, and so. Uh, we are. Based on the resolution. This doesn't have a number regarding the second round of uh ARPA funding. We wanted to potentially utilize four hundred thousand dollars of that money to help with that.
Yeah, uh, the first part of it is. Uh, we're looking to get this done this year. So in order to that, we would have to have contract the design. Uh, we asked for a proposal from AKRF because they've helped us, uh, especially as it relates to the Maric Avenue. Uh, school uh walking safety assessment, and some of the recommendations, this kind of ties into that.
Yeah.
Um, so we gotta ask for those member, uh, they pride that, which was about the. Uh, a hundred and sixty five thousand, which included uh, uh, you know, several uh tasks. Uh, I believe included the uh. Uh, uh, design, surveying, uh, and uh bid, uh, document preparation. Uh, and uh, construction administration. Um, we feel that we can conduct the construction administration in-house. Uh, and just for a point of comparison, uh. We used what's known as the New York State DOT estimator. To calculate the all the all the costs, all the qualities that would be involved. Uh, we anticipate the project to cost two hundred thousand dollars and based, I'm sorry, a million dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, based on the DOT estimator, just for design and construction, they estimated about three hundred twenty thousand. So this is a, you know, savings off that. Uh, and then if we can do the construction administration in-house, uh, that would help as well. Uh, addition, in addition to the four hundred thousand dollars which we spoke about with the board last week. Uh, there was still one hundred seventy five thousand dollars in that uh neighborhood stabilization fund. That was uh set up as part of the transit oriented uh uh district overlay zone. Uh, which, you know, we could use that to help fund uh this project as well, so the resolution that has prepared. Uh, through the board's consideration this evening, we would appropriate the four hundred thousand dollars and the one hundred and seventy five. That has kind of be be the initial funding of this project.
What would, so. The idea is, this is with this additional funding. Um, so my question is, what? The is the goal to do this in-house, to do all this, all this work in-house, or is it?
No, no, we would, we would, uh, we would have the design.
The design.
Contract the design.
Yeah.
And we would uh issue a contract for the work. You know, we we don't have the staff to uh build this type of sidewalk in in this time of, uh, this timeframe.
And and we expect the work to be done over the summer, just like um um around MAS school, which it has been working on.
Yeah, got it, so the process was a million dollars and we're seeing, and we basically are have funding for essentially half of it, you have to the five seventy five.
That's right. And uh, if uh if and when we get to a recommendation or a contract award. Uh, I imagine the the resolution would be written to fund the balance through either a. Future use of uh fund balance or issuance of debt, which is the standard language that we use on our resolutions.
But keep in mind that thing. There's extensive work right around that area, right around MAS and uh New Street and on Senior Good Line and all of that area there, so.
Yeah.
I suspect that very competitive it's coming in.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna have the CDBG project this summer, uh, which is, we're also including the drainage work. Uh, in the same areas, that's gonna be a significant contract, and then this would be kind of the next phase. Uh, hopefully be done, I think, September, October timeframe. So we're trying to get a lot of work done.
This is a lot, yeah, that's a lot.
Needed.
Yeah, yeah, it's been over how many of our fiscal years?
For that again?
How many of our fiscal years would this go over, if this will start in the summer, so this is one and.
How long?
How long the project?
Uh, well, the project would be, if we, you know, everything works out, we should have a project finished, you know, by. Uh, the beginning of, by, you know, November.
Beginning of November this year.
Yeah, so I mean, it's one fiscal year, but it's a capital project.
So, yeah.
Capital and fiscal aren't exactly.
Bit online.
Is that, um, the sidewalks around um. Most of the uh French American school, which is the uh former Southern Dollar School. Um, that will not have uh the improvements, um, this is around the church and, you know, where the high traffic of the congregation. Uh, typically be.
And and the. The new sidewalks will be just like the old, it'll be an impervious concrete surface?
We can go with impervious, it depends on what we'll do, is we'll do an alternate in the bid, we'll be able to do that, and see what the numbers come in after you guys.
Yeah, yeah, cuz I mean, if we, uh, in that area, if we can, if we can come up with pervious surfaces, I think that would uh. Uh, it's not gonna make that big a difference, but it would be be, you know, sending a proper message.
So the, and just to confirm the sidewalks, you said it would not be the sidewalks around the French American, that would be the ones on St. Vito's?
Yeah, so what we can do, so we're gonna kind of doing the sidewalk on the um Ralph Avenue side.
Okay.
Because that's really bad, and we're gonna be doing work on Ralph Avenue, but then the the sidewalks in front of the French American school. And um, on New Street and on Monsieur Goodwin, we would not be doing.
Got it.
They're not in.
Oh, thank you.
The preferred state of, you know, of of condition that the that they're in, plus also, it's a. For-profit type of school, so there might be something I think the ICs could potentially talk to the French American school about.
Okay.
Not necessarily for us, but they could. Those those sidewalks are not as as terrible as they are in front of the church.
The one in front of the church is horrible, I remember.
And and the ones in front of us, for about this.
Never seen it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've never seen it like that, I know, and I've been here.
Because of, because of the damage, because of the damage.
Yeah, I had.
It's really good.
Pastor Taylor called me about every other week.
Yeah.
When the bridge project was going on, asking, when are we doing the sidewalks and all the things?
By the way, um, Dan and I did not remember about the neighborhood stabilization fund, that was Mr. Cutler who reminded us that we had that ones.
Right away, he's paying off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, so that takes our meeting for tonight. Yeah.
Okay, well, while we're on the subject of 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 this, I was on a a Munich call earlier with the with the with the county, they were mentioning a federal program, one point six billion dollars, safe roads. Think we were on that, right, I I presumed we were, okay.
Okay, uh, new business revision of fee schedule, professional service group, financial advisory services. The clerk treasurer's office.
Laura, you want?
What I remember is.
Well, he's on.
Yes, I'm here.
Hey, Augie.
Yes, yes, Mayor, this is just an update to the engagement letter we have with our current financial advisors.
Okay, and the financial advisor is different than the uh, eh, the auditor, right, this is someone just tells us.
They basically take our bonds out to market and they bring it to the underwriter to to issue financial instruments.
Thank you, Augie. Everybody okay for having a sign from May eighth?
Sure.
Uh, proposal to provide engineering and design services for the traffic signal prospect in the Maric Avenue, East Prospect of the section, now. The, we have. The signal there, right?
Yeah, correct.
So what what what's the issue?
So it it's reaching the, it has reached the end of its useful life. Um, eh, if you approach the signal from the.
East.
East Prospect, uh, one of the signal heads was ruined, you're supposed to have two signals for each bit, way of travel. Uh, and we have one which.
Why, that's fine, but why do we need two signals, what is that about?
In case one fails.
Ah, as it as it has.
Yes, so, I mean, it's kind of less of an issue now with the LEDs that last eight to ten years, but.
We're on the backup right now.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, so the, uh, we asked for. They submitted such a proposal, uh, in the amount of thirty six thousand dollars. Uh, you know, when we included this. In the capital budget, we estimated that it would cost around three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, wow.
That's, no, traffic signals are are not cheap. Uh, the uh, uh, so it's about ten to fifteen percent of the anticipated project cost, which we believe is fair and consistent with industry standards.
Thank you. Everybody okay with that on for the eight?
Sure, you know, now, looking through the list that came with this, which is the traffic signal inventory, I mean. I've never noticed any, and you say we're on the backup, so that 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 explains that that we're anticipating that. But that intersection seems okay to me, I mean, it doesn't seem like it's got.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't think there's anything, it's not the highest volume.
Yeah.
Of intersection along the Maric Avenue corridor, but because of the physical state of the signal, just.
But but.
It's a, it's the priority.
But I I continue to be bothered by uh, Maric Avenue and Halsted, Mount Pleasant. And and uh, uh, and Hoyt over there, by the uh, by the toll truck demolition derby.
Right.
Uh, um, uh, and uh, so, I I think that's gonna need some serious, serious attention. You know.
Yeah.
Yesterday.
We gotta deal about that bridge again today.
Yeah, and and those numbers are really big, those numbers. I think uh, in order to move all the infrastructure and everything that's in place there, what was it, somewhere around four million dollars?
Uh, about two million, it's it's it's.
To to, I saw that plan, and that plan doesn't address either of the two things that I think are seriously wrong with that intersection, which are. The the bridge, uh, you not preventing or or sufficiently warning trucks before they hit the bridge. Aside from the sign, maybe some kind of physical barrier, and that that um, that crossing from Mount Pleasant. To Maric, which isn't allowed, which doesn't exist, which is in constant use, on the way home, I promise you, when I'm standing there, people will cross in front. So people cross there all the time, and there's no, we're acting like we don't understa- we don't know that's happening.
Well, the plan that we've developed would allow for the crosswalk. And the the reason why there's no, I I don't wanna.
Yeah.
The the it, that is a county intersection.
I know.
So in order for us to do that, we require county approval. This has been a, something that the village has been discussing with the county. I I wanna say from time immemorial, aside from the fact that we've wanted traffic lights for about a hundred years.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's, as long as there have been traffic lights there, that has been an issue. Um, we've gone to the county many times, the concept that we developed is what the county would agree to. Um, so that would allow us to have that crosswalk from really Bishop to uh, across Mount Pleasant. And that's, that's, it's, in order to do it right, uh, the county said, you know, we won't let you do this unless, if you do. Kind of ABCD and A, and everything that we come up with is what makes it about a two million dollar project.
Well.
I mean, that's a, if that is the part, if that's a priority for the village, we can certainly.
I think it should be, well.
Or we we can move that forward to the capital plan, I can, you know, ask for a proposal for the.
And and the county feels no obligation to fix a road that they have that we know is dangerous?
Um, well, I mean, the. The. Changes to the roadway are the county's responsibility. Uh, so when it comes to a county roadway, and then this discusses later about the Palmer Avenue. Uh, they are responsible for the pavement and the storm sewer infrastructure. The village or the local municipality is responsible for everything else, which is completely, you know, the sidewalks, the lights, uh, the traffic lights, the streetlights. So that's why we own the traffic lights, the county, uh, you know, uh, because of Mount Pleasant Avenue, we has the. So that's why we own the traffic lights, the county, uh, you know, uh, because of Mount Pleasant Avenue, we has the. Uh, in ownership of the intersection from the perspective of the Mount Pleasant side. Uh, you know, again, we've. So that's something we can certainly approach the county, see if they'd be willing to, you know, or or, uh, you pay some, pay for something towards this. Um, you know, we have the CDBG program coming out again next year, we can apply for funding, but you know, that would be about it. We could only get about two hundred thousand dollars out of C CDBG for this and it's a, well, kind of a drop in the bucket of the overall project. I believe it is, no, yeah, absolutely, cuz. No, no, Mamarone Avenue.
That's good.
But the, the, the lowest, yeah, the lowest of the LMI.
Yeah.
Is Mamarone Avenue between the railroad and Post Road.
So if we get, if we get ten percent from CDBG and we get a quarter or a half from the county. It could work for us.
I, and I continue to believe that the 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 design I've seen from uh, from A, AK. I continue to believe that a, that a circle would work there, but uh, I I think they need to go back to, to back to the drawing board on it and and. And come up with something, I I just think it's a matter of time before there's a problem there. That's it, but I know, uh, Ryan Brock brought it up, not brought it up, but the question is, traffic circles up too, and I think that's a perfect place to want.
As well as the, um, not just, uh, not Ryan, but also that remember the, um. The young men from the uh, the young boys from the Boy Scouts.
Yeah, yes. Well, we we got, we got some Boy Scouts that came to us wanting to, demanding to know why, why we can't stop the trucks from hitting the bridge and I'm like, well.
I mean, I did ask them to.
We haven't tried.
But I I can recirculate that, that uh.
But you know, I, you know, kids see things simply and I, and I, I think, I think there's something there, I mean, I, I, every time I, we, when I leave here tonight. I'll go that way, I'll stop and somebody's gonna cross right in front of my car and there's still crosswalk there. And it's like, why not, yeah?
We just, we have to.
Mayor Board, if you want us to work on it, it's not like we're not familiar with it, you just gotta let us know.
Work on it.
Work on it, you can ask for, next meeting we'll bring some kind of a draft letter that the board sends to the county. Let's do that, let's do that.
Yeah.
So on the eighth, we'll bring, we'll bring that, Dan will write up the draft letter and.
But put the, put the draft letter both on the work session and on the regular set.
Okay, okay, that'll be good.
And 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 you remember too, um, the the crossing guard there. Yeah, Karen, she, 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 she was a nervous wreck, she said, I'm there, people are crossing and I'm not supposed to help them, but they're crossing anyway, I don't know what to do and. I mean, I mean, she can see it too.
Yeah, I I met with her, uh, I wanna say li- uh, last, early, early October.
Yeah.
Uh, with her and um, Lieutenant Falcone.
Yeah.
From the police department, we 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 actually did submit a grant application to the United States Department of Transportation. Unfortunately, that was denied.
Yeah.
Uh, but.
I mean, I I'm not a traffic engineer, but there are a number of 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 solutions there that. I, that I can see off the top of my head that could be considered and maybe projected cuz they're not practical.
I I I do know that the, uh, the person that we have been dealing with at county, Department of Public Works and Transportation. Uh, for many years, just recently retired, so we can see if, uh, the person who has replaced him may have a fresh perspective.
Yeah.
Let's, let's try and get to the.
Is it worth submitting, resubmitting to the D I, Department of Transportation?
Well, I mean, I think the program comes again, out again at the end of the year. Um, we were looking to schedule a deep brief with them on it, uh, about what, uh, what could be improved in the application.
Sometimes a second, you know, some second application is the trick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, say approach the school.
Uh, just, is Palmer Avenue, with the sound the making the meeting for two weeks or the eighth?
Yeah, but then I'm, yeah.
Okay.
Sure, sure. For the, for the, for the Prospect Avenue.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
Unless, unless we're, because we're doing the comp plan, unless it's.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I'm looking to do is just make sure we can.
Yes.
Include some resiliency with it.
So will the traffic.
No, I meant the, the other one, the one that we just.
Uh, okay.
Letter.
Three D.
Oh, the letter, so where were we with the letter then? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
What, you just wanna know, you want clarification of.
But I got the stink eye. Okay, sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
All right, next time. Palmer Avenue, the same fruits, the school, traffic committee report to work, but let's just to establish a crosswalk on Palmer Avenue.
So, uh, that, that, so discuss Palmer Avenue is a county road.
By walkers.
Correct. Uh, I spoke with our traffic engineer, uh, if we were to make that request to the county, you have to kind of defend it with some analytical data. They include a proposal to help us with that, uh, so, uh, it's within the manager's authority to. You ask you that proposal if the board wants us to move forward with assembling everything we would need to make that request of the county. Because they would have to paint, they would have to paint the crosswalk, we could work with them on the drop on the curb cuts, but. Uh, they have, they have ultimate approval.
The concern was discussed or the concern was presented to us as the school gets crossing cuz the high school and walkers. Would be connected by this crosswalk.
Right, but it, it, my concern is this, and I'm not saying not to do it, but I I know a child was killed there. Uh, I think that child was killed there when there was a crosswalk there. So I think what happens is it promotes, uh, the idea of cross crossing at a spot that's not a corner. That's not controlled by a light and it's very busy, so I I I just, I'm not saying I'm against it, but I know that that happened there.
Yeah.
And and I don't wanna go back to a bad situation because we don't have institutional memory.
Maybe some traffic calming, uh, measures there?
The, the only thing that you could put there would be the flashing electronics so that when someone hits the button. They would have access to cross.
Yeah.
And would, it would notice the drivers going in each direction.
Or or maybe just. Maybe those sides of, you know, people crossing, you know, like we have at Fenimore.
There's, there's, there's an actual, there's an actual, um, layout of that type of crossing.
Can, can, can we ask, uh, uh, Kamori to opine on this?
Yeah, that would be.
You know, we, we didn't, and I did ask him to opine, he said, if you wanna put the request into the county. We would have to back it up with specific information and if you wanted to help us out with that, there would be a. It would be under his, uh, time and materials portion of his contract. It would be about five, about five to seven, five thousand to seventy five hundred dollars to assist with this.
It is, there is a crossing for this application that requires. Push buttons, flashing lights, crosswalk and all of that stuff.
I, I, I understand the need to do it, cuz kids are gonna cross the, they, since, you know. Since since time.
Memorial, uh, kids have been crossing it.
It's not just gonna be a crosswalk with a floppy sign, it's gonna be infrastructure, it's gonna be built in such a way.
If, if I could, if I could be assured that it'll be safe and that we're not encouraging kids to cross in an areas that's gonna get them hurt.
That's why we need the backup information from the traffic.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the concern about making law crosses, okay.
All right, I mean, and, you know, it's just, it was a, it was a real tragedy. And you know, there's a lot of kids that, of course, you know, that, that area, you have kids walking to central, you have kids walking to the high school. You have kids walking the hummocks, you you go by there in the morning, you know, there's, there's all kinds of, you know, hullabaloo. Yeah, yep. Just, you know, whatever, I mean, that, 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 this, I'm shell shocked, that's so many kids get hit with cars in my life. All right, if, if I, if I could be convinced that this is gonna make it safer. Where are they, you know, that's, that's.
I'll show you.
People gotta make things safer.
Yeah.
I want to stop signs in the world, but at the end of days, people.
Yeah, you're right, you gotta. It, it, we, with, with Pogo, uh, I've seen the enemy and he is us.
Yep.
Because it's, we try to protect people from themselves sometimes, yeah.
That was Pogo.
Uh, mental health awareness, trust the eyes of you.
Thank you, so, um, May is Mental Health Awareness Month and I was speaking with. Who was I speaking with? Lord have mercy. No, I wasn't speaking to you, but. Oh, in charge of the calendar, my memory is hotness, so let's, let's just note that, but I'm in charge of the, uh, website. Thank you, Robert, I'm sorry, Robert, but I was talking about Robert of adding different things. To our website or our possible, um, website, or our, um, newsletter, Facebook page or whatever. And one of the things was Mental Health Awareness Month that we all, um, have to deal with day in and day out and, um. I wanted the board to highlight that because one, our community has dealt with a lot of trauma, especially when it comes down to our flooding. Um, and just trauma all around, people are just dealing with a lot, you dealt with it during COVID. Dealing with it, flooding, you're dealing with it every day with grief, so, um, acknowledging that and we have, we have a. Um, community counseling center and a lot of services in our community, I think it's important for our board and our community, our village, um. Our village staff and our village, our village board to acknowledge, um, that these things are prevalent in our community. How can we best support our residents as well as ourselves?
So you think it'd be appropriate if the board had a resolution, uh, claiming?
Yes, so, Robert, that's why now I remember the name. Robert came up with a resolution in support of it and, uh, do I have to do this?
No, you, I, I, is everybody taking a look at it?
Yes, the only thing that, um, Nora did bring up, um, that I noticed, uh, well, she allowed me to notice it. Was at, um, there is. So before she, at the whereas list, the last paragraph, at the end where it says, as well as, um. Other non-traditional forms of mental health and we just would like to add the word source, we services or just resources. Um, even though it kind of goes along with that resource list, but just adding that extra word, uh, there at the end of mental health. Services or resources, which, um, would be great, as well as, um, it said in. Oh, I s- I saw it clearly here. Who said the residents on, um, citizens? Yeah, but I'm trying to figure out where exactly was it, I shouldn't have highlighted.
There's a village America is dedicated to improve health and well-being of.
Of the citizens and I would like to change, that's what I said, I wanna change the word from citizens to residents. And that's it, other than that, I think it's beautiful, it was wonderfully written by Robert and I appreciate working with him and, uh. I will like to hopefully, um, possibly partner with other village entities, businesses later on. Um, to do more for our, what, overall mental health.
I, 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 I could not agree with you more, uh, and so is that okay with everybody if this is on the agenda for May eighth?
Yes.
Uh, everybody struggles with mental health issues, it's, it's as. It's as prevalent as physical health issues and, uh, but there's not the stigma on physical health issues of getting help. That there is a mental health issues. Uh, and, uh, it, it's, it's really important to reach out if you're struggling and if you know somebody that's struggling. Uh, to urge them to reach out to family, friends, mental health professional. Uh, because it's nothing to be ashamed of, uh, we've all, you know, I, I, I know I've had issues. Uh, and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm grateful recipient of help and, uh, you know, it's, it's, uh. As important as going to the doctor every year for a checkup, I really, really thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Uh, speeding concerns at Harbor Island, the ever popular trust the eyes of Reed.
Well, blessings, cuz you know I'm popular. Um, this is, where am I? Oh, this is coming from the Traffic Commission as well as, um. Uh, Jason at Parks, they would like to, they have a concern about speeding at, um, Harbor Island. And as I've been told, Harbor Island is not necessarily like a, um, designated street or, you know, road. And the Traffic Commission really would like to have, like, there was a, um, a. Uh, 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 sign, a speeding sign, uh, that was, that stated like ten miles per hour. And I've tried to drive one ten miles per hour, that's.
That's just.
Really slow, but, um. Fifty miles, uh, they're not, it, it was, it was between ten and fifteen, um, if we can post there, but if. If there's other alternatives that if we cannot put a, um, a speed sign there, what are some other measures that we can do to help? Um, people from speeding in that area.
We can put a sign there.
Uh, you, you can establish an advisory speed limit, you would say it says, you know, it, it'd just be in yellows with the speed, speed to say. You know, I, I would say you do whatever you do a school zone. Cuz it was the same type of population, uh, I did speak, this came up several months ago. Uh, I discussed it with the chief and then I was to discuss this with, uh, the traffic engineer, uh, Mr. Carmody. Uh, one of the things he suggested was, uh, speed pumps or speed tables. Uh, and there's a particular one that is, uh, narrow enough that a car would drive over. But then a larger emergency vehicle would not be impacted by it. Uh, so it's just, that's something we could look at as well.
What's the difference between a speed truck and table, or speed hump and table?
It's just that, it's kind of the, there's speed bumps, speed humps, speed tables, so. A speed bump is, that's the usual thing you see in the road.
Yeah.
A speed hump is more.
On what is on, which street is that?
Uh, Grand Street.
And Brent, yeah, yeah.
Uh, and then what the speed table was, is that was kind of that, uh.
People fly over speed table.
I think, yeah, I think that does.
I drive, driving in New York City on every ancillary street, they have, uh, speed humps.
Yeah.
And if you're going fast, you're gonna know that you.
Yeah, yeah, it reminds you, sometimes you, you know, sometimes you forget.
Yes, I did discuss with the chief that even if there's not a speed limit, an official speed limit. Uh, there are other manners in which we can enforce if someone's just being. More reckless, um, and that's something you can't cite under the state, uh, vehicle traffic law.
So we could add speed humps.
Yeah, but you could just say, you know, uh, uh, Harbor Island, fifty miles per hour, please.
Well, no, but the.
Tell them.
But, uh, we have to reinstall signage in accordance with what is known as the manual of uniform traffic involved devices and the. The New York State supplement, so it, it, there's a list of about, you know, ten thousand different signs we are allowed to use. And we would, you, we would put, we would erect a sign.
Just put a speed, and split speed humps, can we do that or do we have to have both?
Uh, I think usually if you're gonna have some sort of speed control device like a speed hump, you want to, you have to advise them that, uh. That's, that's there, so you have to have some sort of.
That's gonna stop the speeding, you could see a sign and you're.
The sign says speed up ahead.
Yes, exactly, I think we just do that, I just think people are gonna skip if it's just a sign or like whatever the sign. What's gonna make me slow down?
We did that, we would have to have the appropriate.
Okay, so I think we, I think we should, I have a question, what about, are the signs all up for the speed limit changed twenty five miles per hour across the village?
I, I can check with Public Works and most of the signs were already done. A couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Uh, the only signs that hadn't been, that weren't changed and the only streets that the speed limit changed to that effect. Were the county roads and the state roads, those still have the thirty mile an hour, uh, speed limit, but I, we can, I can discuss with our public works to.
The, the email traffic recently indicated that there's a, there's a thirty mile an hour speed limit on Taylor Lane sign.
Okay.
So that probably needs to be changed.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I think that, 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 I think that would be the original change too.
That should be twenty.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We've got to take it down.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Little reminders, that's okay.
All right.
So, um, what, what's the next step, Dan?
Um, I, I think if there's some direction from the board, eh, none of this requires, since none of this requires to change it all.
You know, this requires any sort of official board action.
Okay, so why don't, why don't we get moving on a hump?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should get some humps.
Get moving on the hump. That's a Rick James cut off the second.
Yeah, so we go into fifteen mph and installing.
Let's just put the hump first.
Even gonna hurt, put it on.
Yeah, I think, I think the main concern was the access road between the east and the west base.
Yeah. Thank you.
There's, there's a million kids running.
Which way?
I know, there were sports games going on, I don't think, you know.
Balls going into the road.
This is. Uh, slow down.
All right, so, Paul Brown, Paul, bingo, clear for the environment, we did affordable housing placement process.
Okay, this is the thing, I think we're all aware of, the Phillips Park, uh, situation with the empty, uh, affordable unit. Uh, and the placement of it, and I wanted to talk about it cuz I want it to happen, I want this discussion to happen in the open so people know about it and, um. And, uh, I know there was a meeting, uh, with. Two of our, uh, trustees and, uh, and, uh, Jerry and the developers and, uh.
Mary.
And Mary.
And Mary, so, so, um, I'll, I'll ask you was, what's up with that because I, uh, I'm just perplexed. That they can't find somebody for. That they can't find somebody for this apartment when you know there's people who would, who would kill to get it.
So it was always my understanding that the town will be placing people in affordable units because they have. Uh the community service department which took over our housing department fifteen years ago. That was always my understanding.
That was my understanding too from that point on.
And that was the mayor's understanding, who voted for that resolution in two thousand and eight. So when that department was basically, um they lost their department head and is now being disbanded with layoffs. Um there is no longer anyone at the town that handles housing or vouchers or anything of that nature. Um on March fifteenth, the town passed that on to the state. Uh what leaves, it leaves a hole for us in the fact that we have never been prepared nor have we been asked to place. Individuals who would qualify for affordable housing in the affordable housings that we man, affordable units that we mandate these developers to build.
I just have to jack something here, uh cause I saw an email from the town administrator uh.
Today.
Today, basically pushing back on that, but you know, now we have uh Mr. Cutler back. Uh who should be up to speed on all this stuff, if he could give us a list of the units. That the town has placed folks in for us in the past to refresh the su, the supervisor and the administrator town of America's memory. They know that we have.
So, in my opinion, I think the pushback will continue because they don't really have the resources nor do they have the interest in doing this. Um so we are a community that gave up our housing authority.
Yeah.
And don't have one now, uh because I know that at the town is being, the community service department is being disbanded. So we have one unit at three fifty-five and two additional units that will be available soon at one seventy-two. Those park road that are available um for individuals who would qualify, a qualifying individuals, one bedroom units. Um their rent would be one thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars as opposed to a market rate of twenty-seven hundred dollars for that unit. They could uh make up to, I don't recall if you guys can help, seventy-five thousand in, in around seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh or less and they would qualify for that discounted uh uh affordable unit.
For one person?
One or, one or a couple, they said one or a couple.
One person is seventy-seven, six fifty and two is eighty-eight, seven fifty.
There we go, so those are the numbers Nora just said, thank you. So, so the developer wanted to buy their way out of the affordable unit, which I said will not fly, just don't even talk about that. And the second thing was that they were willing to certify the individual who they would place in that unit. Which um. I don't necessarily want, but it's not what I want, it's what the board wants. So um if we're going to place an individual. In a, in a unit that the planning board and the village mandates, we should probably be involved in the process as opposed to taking the. Developers' word for it.
Yeah, I agree.
You know. Lailani and Manny can add whatever I miss.
I think that the county, you know, you uses um the housing action. As a housing, as a housing action lens that um Rose Noonan's organization, for units that they sell. There's, there's a process for marketing fair and affordable housing. But it's, you know, there's a, probably an economy of scale, if you're doing it for an entire building. It's, you know, you have, you have a system, they, it's usually gonna be a lottery, if it's a couple of units, I think we need to figure out what an efficient. Process for doing it is, and I know that, you know, there's like, you get, you, you can get on a waitlist, you might win, you might, you might, might win in the lottery. You get in a waitlist, but the county partners with other organizations that do that, at least for stuff they sell, the rental units might be a little bit different. But I'm also concerned about this, this resolution from two thousand and eight. Um because it's just talked about section eight, it didn't talk about anything else, so it may have been that the town. Was providing the service of, 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 of renting affordable units that we have in the village. But if any, you know, and we're not using any grant money for these units, so we are under different. Regulations than we, than we would be, we're just requiring the developer to do it, but I think we just need to have a process and know how to do this.
Agree.
So that's where I turn the mic to.
I would.
Can I, can I say something before you say something? Thank you.
My, my concerns with all of this and yes, all the numbers look great, you know, in terms of. Um for one person seventy-seven, two persons eighty-eight and it's, and but the rent, the actual rent. Of this is not cheap and no person really who even makes that can truly afford that. I just wanna make that, I just wanna note that, so it can be really difficult to place somebody in this, in this particular um apartment or this space. When the rent is truly not affordable.
What was it, one thousand nine hundred, what?
Nineteen fifty, I think.
Nineteen seventy-five.
However. The truth is the truth.
Yeah, that's true, but there are people out there, I know it.
Set by us, you're right.
I know it's not set by us, but I just wanna make, I wanna, in general, I just want people to understand that. There are a lot of gaps in this system, it's not just a one, one way that somebody else couldn't put. Place a person in granted, there's many reasons, there's many reasons.
It's twenty-three thousand three hundred forty a year.
Yeah, coming right out of your take home bank.
But what Nora said was that there's no grant money, there's nothing along the line, there's a, we control. We control, we don't necessarily control the rent or the set price. But we do control the placement if we wanna get some people in there um to do this.
So can we advertise it?
That's what I don't know.
But we did have a process by which affordable units developed in the village, worked, were managed by the town, if you will, the selection process. That's in our code.
It's in our code?
Yeah.
So that's, that, that's apparently gone. So we can write these two pieces to this, one is the section eight piece. Which has to conform to whatever heart regulations are in the environment, I, I can't tell you what they are off the top of my head. And then there's the affordable housing, the units that are being created under the village code. And we have to have a process for those, giving, letting the developer do that is not, I don't think is appropriate.
No.
So what steps can we take?
So, in fact, I'm sorry, it's section eight, person could put, uh be placed into this?
I don't know the answer there.
Yeah, that's.
The other affordable housing is our program, which means you could do pretty much what you want as long as it's fair and equitable. I had very detailed regulations, I'm not an expert on those, I don't know how they would apply.
But I think, I, um, I'm sorry, I don't, don't mean to interrupt. So I, I think if you have a section eight voucher and you can find an apartment and the landlord will take that voucher. That landlord can rent it to you, so I think there is the, huh?
It's, there's over, there's almost four hundred vouchers in the village town area. That have a section eight, there's, the town managed almost four hundred vouchers.
So if you, so, so if, if you have a voucher and you can find a landlord, who's, so the voucher goes with the. Tenant, not with the unit.
And, and under Westchester County law. All landlords are required to take the voucher.
So to Lailani's question, yes, a section eight tenant could rent that if. The, if the numbers worked and to her other point, the numbers may not.
No, I mean, if you have a section eight voucher, couldn't, you do a lot of things in life. But if you don't have a section eight um voucher and you're still looking for a file of a housing, affordable is not affordable. Especially the way we develop in communities today, so that's what I'm saying. And we have to be very mindful of that, because if we're not, we're just sitting there. Doing anything, thinking that people could afford, and if you've never really even been in that space to even understand what affordable. How to afford, be able to afford something, you can, you would think that somebody can and they can't. And we have to be very mindful of that.
Okay.
That's all.
There are people who want that apartment.
They want, is what I want.
Talking to a definition.
Yeah, yeah, alright.
I mean, like when we, when it. When, when the hu, when the, when the hundred percent affordable building on the Hunter tier is completed. The part of the process will be the developer, who has most likely gotten grants and sources. Will have to go through a process to. To market it in, in, in an even-handed, consistent way and they may use, you know, a, a group that's good at marketing these things. But it's, there's, there's, it's different for, for, for a building or a big project than it is when we have this one or two units. And that's what we don't know how to do.
Right, so we have to come up with a process. Uh, we, we, obviously the town is gonna help us, so let's just, get about the time.
Alright, I'll forget.
Yeah, what, what steps can we take?
I wasn't gonna forget, but I will.
No, no, I'm.
I'm, I'm not a guy who.
Jerry, what I mean is move forward, don't forget.
Okay.
So Jerry.
But I can, and Nora and I spoke earlier today, I can call the county, I can say, hey, get me in touch with someone that could help us. Do this, so we could put, so we could put the, we could put something in place to do these. Odds and ends kind of units and create that kind of system, if you're okay with it. Our code though, I wouldn't be going against our code, but. Right.
Right, but I think what you have to do is figure out what process, how you wanna manage.
Yeah, I can do that.
We can write the code.
Okay.
To match what you wanna do.
Okay, so I'll use the county resources to, to be able to create that.
There, there is, but right now, the formal housing sections, divisions of the code. Are in the um, the zoning provisions that have been allowed for that. What we wanna do is take it out and have an affordable housing section and it will govern how we manage affordable housing. Going forward on all these fronts, how, as you said, how everything, how it's all done.
We start working on that now?
Yeah.
As for me being, like, I know, like, changing the code and that's such a long process that. Let's just start working on that now if we know we're gonna, you know, it seems gonna be an issue going forward.
So I will have for you how I think we would be best able to move forward on the process. And then I'll pass that on to Bob and Mary, they will have to develop language for coding.
And then, is it, so, and this is just for us to manage just affordable units that come up through developers, but is there a way for us to get the section eight vouchers? That have gone back to the state or that it's kind of like, is it the state, it's gonna be really difficult for us to kind of get to manage that?
I would have been fine managing it, but Laura asked.
Got it, and then. Do we know how many units are, how many units are available currently besides the one, the one and two that are on Spark Road?
I think Greg will be able to answer that really easily because that was calculated during the moratorium process and.
Yeah, we were told there was no waiting list, like, there was no one on the waiting. And they, and they managed section eight and there was no one on the waiting list for section eight to move into a lot.
Oh, what, what I'm suggesting is if we let people know, people, somebody who's making uh seventy-five thousand dollars a year, that. That they can be, they can, they can qualify for affordable housing, it's gonna be a shock to some people. They, they wouldn't even think about uh, uh, about, so, you know, that, that, just to let them know that it's there, because you know they're there. And you know they don't know about it and the, the apartment's sitting over there empty.
But it's gonna be frustrating for them if they contact me and I can't give them the process or I can't tell them what the process is.
Got it.
Gotta develop that process before we can start, yeah, you know.
Alright.
Start getting Robert on it and pushing it out.
So can we, it's the three things we need from Greg, I just wanna make sure I got this, is the listen unit, the list of units that Town America has placed. Um like affordable people in, in the village.
In the last fifteen years.
Correct that, and then how many units are available in the village and then. And yeah, that's it.
Not necessarily available.
But how many units exist, yeah, it exists within the village, I, I'm just curious to know.
Just, we also got um a request from some, some MHS students who are interested in having that information because it's one of the projects they're gonna do, so. I was just waiting until Greg came back because I know he will be able to.
I have that, I should have that email.
Greg's gonna be busy, yeah.
Around doing nothing. Uh we do not have an executive session tonight because Bob has told me that there has been no communication, can we save the sound? And we're gonna wait for the. Next week or two weeks from now when uh Mike Heckel is back. Alright, so.
Great.
I need a motion to end the work session. All in favor? We got your works.
To know everything is sometimes to know nothing at all and to know nothing is sometimes to know everything. Understanding the difference will allow you to work, allow your work to speak for you. I am who I am because you allowed your work to speak for you. I learned to push and exceed my own boundaries because you allowed your work to speak for you. And now, as I do what I does, I can allow your work to speak through me. And that is my poem for her and for you. I, I pray that our work speaks for us because at the end of the day, when we are all said and done. It's the work that we have presented that is going to last.
First item on the agenda is a presentation, we have a young man here tonight, uh named Aiden, Aiden William Judge. Aiden, would you come up here please, my friend? Aiden, wanna read the, uh, to get a recognition. From joining the scouts as a cub at eight years old and the Boy Scouts in twenty seventeen. Holding positions of troop scribe, assistant senior patrol leader, patrol leader, senior patrol leader. And now for achieving the rank eagle scout.
With your project, the綠berg nature center by designing, building, installing two coal boxes. And animal enrichment toys, uh, the coal boxes allow for greater capacity to grow different plants. And the toys are to enrich the lives of snakes, parrots, and small rodents. We thank Aiden for his work on behalf of the nature center, and applaud his dedication, hard work, and commitment to the community. I'm gonna ask Aiden to say a couple of words about what it is that he, he did, uh, before I give him the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name's Aiden, I've been a scout for more than probably twelve years. Um, I live in the town of Maranick, I, I'm an Eagle Scout from troop four Larchmont. About half our scouts are from the village of Maranick and town. Uh, we do a lot of work with the village, we do conservation, and we do a lot of stuff at the harbor. Uh, for my Eagle project, I had to, but the description that we're given is to create a project that benefits your community. By, and you have to lead yourself and lead others, so I knew I wanted to do something with nature, just because it's one of the most important. Things in our lives, uh, we don't, it doesn't get a lot of attention today, and I knew that, like, a passion of mine is just creating things. Building something, and I knew I wanted to do something to benefit my community. So I talked to a few different nature centers and community organizations, and I settled on Greenberg Nature Center. Which is about fifteen minutes away in, I think it's technically Starsdale.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I talked with their grounds keeper, um, and we decided on me building two germination boxes, coal boxes. For young plants, they essentially act as like a small greenhouse, so it's a pine box that's treated and painted on the inside. And there's a glass cover on it, so it allows heat to come in and not to escape. So it, the nature center can now start their plants earlier in the spring and have to buy less for their animals. And they can use it as a part of their teaching tours for the young members of the community. I also built, uh, snake enrichment board. Um, it's, uh, it's essentially just a sheet of plywood with sticks coming out of it that acts kind of mimic a tree. So when a snake is climbing up, it, it, uh, feels like they're in nature. Um, and it helps, they, they do studies on this kind of enrichment stuff, and it helps animals live longer, better lives. I also built, uh, a system for rodent engineering, which you can see on, uh, rodent enrichment, which you can see on the, in that box on the left. It's just a bunch of tubes that members of the community or employees at the nature center can figure into different, uh. Courses for the animals to go through, and they simulate their burrowing instincts in nature, so it's like giving a little tunnel under their. You know, natural habitat. Um, we installed them in the mid, beginning of January with the, most of the troop, it's probably six or eight people. We dug the boxes into the ground and delivered enrichment devices, and the nature center was very grateful for our help.
That's great. Depending on you, well, uh, a boy scout, uh, you know what a monumental task it is to become an Eagle Scout. And we applaud that, we, we did a little recognition of that, and we'll be watching you for great things in the future. Sure, all the work that helped you facilitate.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Okay. Before we get onto the regular agenda. Uh, there've been some changes to the meeting's, uh, procedure, uh, that was talked about on the board. Uh, the. Thank you, good night, sir. The communication to the board, now it's gonna be called the invitation to address the board, and it'll be limited to three minutes, which, uh. Sally, you'll time?
Yes.
Okay, uh, because, uh, Mr. Augustino is, uh, working from home tonight. And everything else common period will be three minutes, and then at the end, there'll be another three minute invitation to address the board. Uh, I just wanna point out, the village of Maranick, uh, is the only community with two. Possibilities of addressing the board, uh, if you look around, most communities only have one, we have two, and. Almost, and we are the only committee that allows you to comment upon the agenda items as they're taken by the board. So, please adhere to the rules, the rules aren't adhered to, uh, we're, we're gonna. Adjourn the meeting, then pick it up and leave it, you know, they, we're not gonna do, uh. The, uh, the, uh, public comment, if people don't, please follow the rules, and the rules are for everybody. And, uh, it was starting a nouveau day today. Okay, uh, we're gonna do invitation to address the board first, and then we're gonna proceed, we, we're gonna skip. And we're gonna go to four H because the library folks are here, and, uh, I don't want them waiting all night. Okay, invitation to address the board, round one. Go ahead, sir.
First come, first.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Bear in mind it's three minutes.
Yes, 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 I'm not gonna. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I'm David Smith, I'm at ten twenty-five Oak Road, I'm the manager at Hampshire Country Club. And I'm here to express my concern over a delay the club is experiencing. In securing a permit to clear on irrigation by. On a retention basin at the health course. Um, and I'm here because I know you're looking to streamline these processes in general, and in particular, it's. It could be considered standard maintenance, um, of a man-made retention basin. After ten years, there's been build and sediment buildup in this man-made basin, and we're looking to clear that out. The goal of the project is to lessen the burden of the municipal water supply. Which I believe aligns with the goals of the village. Um, we did reach out to the DEC to obtain, uh, whether they need a permit. They do not consider it a protected water body or a wetland, so they didn't require any permits. I had Mr. Frabecio, the village engineer, out in December. He initially, he thought the same thing, but then he got back to us and said that a permit would be required. Although questionable, no problem, no issues there, my concern is, once we compiled all of the information and brought it to the building department. I was initially turned away, um, the people at the building department, uh, said they had never received a. Um, a, a permit to dredge an irrigation pond, they didn't know what to do, they didn't know what to accept, so they said I'd have to come back. I came back April fourth, and after being advised by Ms. Von Seka, they did accept the application. Um, they also accepted the flood plain development plan, which was questionable whether they needed, but they accepted that along with the application fee. At that time, they said that, um, once the application was reviewed, I would be contacted. And given a date to go before the planning board. Um, that was April fourth, I followed up this past Friday and was told by the building department. Um, they were in the process of moving, understandable, changing their software, they would not be able to. Um, make any advisements or check any status of any applications until May, so I'd have to come back in May. So my issue is that we're running out of time to go through the process. Get approvals and do the project, which is ultimately going to help the water, the municipal water supply. So I guess I have two requests, one, is there any way that I could check on the status of this application? Before next week, before May? And secondly, is there any way to expedite the process? So we could complete a project that is, uh, to benefit the, 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 the village. And I'm not looking to, I'm not looking to circumvent.
I understand, I, I think you're, you're best bet is to call the village manager's office tomorrow, and, uh, cause he's, he's heard what you said, and see what. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, and good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey Sally, don't start until I actually hit the voting. Take your time, Glenn, take your time. Blood tip at five oh six Hill Street. Um, I really don't like the new three-minute policy, I know you like to quote, um. Lincoln with the getting for a good dress, but understand, if it wasn't for the Lincoln Douglas debates that lasted eight, ten hours at a time. Link would never been a recognized national politician, would never been the president. We have a lot of good ideas that, um, come from the village, and there's very few meetings. That are stretched out by public comment, and normally, when the public comment, um. Uh, meeting is, is dominated by public comment, it's a very important issue, whether it's flooding, dam, housing and such. And just allowing people to get comfortable at the microphone, I don't think there's a big difference between. Letting them have the five minutes to gather their thoughts and have complete thoughts before this board. If you happen to have a meeting where there's fifty or seventy residents, and you say, look, they, we're gonna, we're gonna be an hour. And you please, uh, try not to repeat, and try to re- refrain a little bit. I can understand, but your last meeting, when you debated for forty-five minutes about shortening the meeting. Your actually meeting is thirty-seven minutes. Most of your meetings, you only have one or two people in the entire audience that might speak on a subject. Most meetings, you're out of here between nine and ten o'clock, it's very rare when you have one of those long meetings, and like I said. When you have a long meeting, it's because the public really has a subject they're passionate about. And I perfectly find, somebody goes over, you know, the, 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 uh, five-minute rule, at that point, you can cut them off, you're gonna ask staff to microphone turn it off. But, I really think that a lot of members of the public aren't used to public speaking. And it takes some, you know, thirty seconds or a minute to, to, to get, to get into their game. And it's kind of tough for them to get out a lot of thoughts in three minutes. And quite frankly, there's been a lot of ideas that have come from the public over the years. That have actually enhanced the village, including, uh, the biggest one is like, uh, years ago, they wanted to close the, um. Entrance on ninety-five, going towards the city, and they wanted everybody to go past the dam. It was public comment and some volunteers that got together with the state DOT that redesigned the bridge. That you have to leave extra lanes there, that you didn't have everybody having to go past that S curve and get on the highway up there. There's a lot of good ideas that come from the residents, and just because you got a couple of residents that are bad apples. It shouldn't affect every single resident. Thank you, I'll, I'll, I'll keep that in mind, thank you all. Take your time, Glenn. By the way, my sister, my sister thanks you. You're doing a good job.
Thank God bless you.
Good evening, Stuart Tinker, um, I, I listened to the meeting about, um, reducing the time. And my question is why the board, um, didn't do it? Make a change to the procedures as procedures require. They require a majority vote to change the procedures, so it's a little concerning that there's an idea that. If the meeting stopped, all of a sudden, there's a reset and nobody can speak. Um, so I'm happy to comply with the meeting minutes, um, I'm sorry, the. New procedures, three minutes, um, but I hope you'll all be cognizant that trustee Young's. Um, notion that you can let people who assume you like their speech to go. That's what you said, Luke. And keeping with the Lincoln thing, I'd just like to, um. Do an update for this of the expert address. Two score and seven years ago, our national leaders brought forth to this country. The Freedom of Information Law and Open Meetings Law, together known as the Sunshine Laws. They were conceived in transparency and dedicated to the proposition of the public's right to know. And observe its government's decision-making. Now we are engaged in a debate, testing whether the sunshine law is so conceived and dedicated. And continue to endure in the village of Maranick. We are speak, we are meeting in a place of that debate, we have come to dedicate time, three minutes anyway. To those who give their time and thoughts that freedom of speech and transparency might live. It is altogether fitting and proper, we should do this, but in a larger sense, we cannot dedicate, we cannot concentrate. We cannot add all, we can only advocate to protect this right. Those today who might little know or respect the actions of the past, long remember. That these rights are what protect us from authoritarianism and tyranny. It is for us to be dedicated to protecting the unfinished work of forming a more perfect union. That respects and protects the rights of the public. It is for us to be dedicated to the work remaining before us. And highly beseech all that these rights were not created in vain, and will lead to a new birth of transparency. And the government of the people, by the people, and for the people. That will not perish from this village, thank you.
Thank you, good evening. Uh, so I'm gonna take, oh, you almost, I didn't see it.
Good evening, will this board be entertaining any comments under what you have on your agenda regarding seeker? Or PLL, A twenty twenty four?
The public hearing is closed.
That's not the question I asked.
That's the answer.
Okay, so seekers included, did you receive both my email today? As well as an email that I CC'd you to the Harvard Coastal Sound last week?
See yours.
Should, could it make you, make you comment?
I just wanna verify if it was received.
I received them.
Thank you.
Yes, later on today, yes.
Very, I'm very sad to be standing here today. Because I've spent six years on board in this village, and seeker laws were updated in twenty nineteen. And from the records that I see posted to the agenda, it doesn't seem as if you're nowhere near. Being able to contemplate a negative declaration under seeker for the law. There's another record on the agenda that you're referring this to the county. And under seeker, which evaluates all the environmental resources. That might be impacted by the entire activity that you're looking at. Um, it, it's, it's, it needs to be first started with declaring your intent for lead agency. And circulating your intent for lead agency, which is obvious, you're, you're the only one to legislate. Among all interested and involved agencies, that hasn't been done. So, as I said in my emails today. There's no information that identifies environmental resources that are affected by you looking at this law. That's supposed to be done, question one, in the intent, the narrative and the intent, nothing was identified. Nor have you received any information about anywhere in the village. All non-residential zoning districts, um, what areas are affected, you might know that. But if you haven't identified the environmental resources, pretty tough to make a negative declaration under seeker. So, in my email, I put some very strong language that I think it's pretty egregious. For you to even consider this in blood zones, because that hasn't been discussed, it applies. Because the C one district and others are there.
Thank you, Ms..
So I'm hoping you're not going to make a decision.
Thank you, Ms. Ronnie.
To, and, uh, do a negative. To and uh do a negative declaration until you get all the data that you need.
Thank you.
To do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? How's it going?
Hey, Paul.
Don't start, Sally. No, no, just talk to the mic. I'll avoid him. Please don't yell out to the audience. Thanks, Manny. You're welcome, Manny. Well, you two, I got to, I got.
Ah, there you go. New math.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Start the clock on Paul.
For the record, three fourteen billboard. So I'm here tonight about another issue that Maric is always been dealing with. Uh, traffic, of course, and uh. I've been asking for a shuttle system for years and we're supposed to put it on in twenty twenty, right, Jerry? And COVID came and supposed to do conjunction with the US Open and it didn't take place. So I've been trying to pursue it again recently. And so there was a little dialogue and I'm sure. Statuses and so I found a commercial does something on a circuit. And if you flip the page, you'd see a lot of many cities deal with it as well. And if I read correctly, it says, you know, free of cost, but I'm sure that's not the case at all. So I just hopefully we can explore this possibility, Jerry, as well, circuit. And any other. Maybe doing it again as we plan with the show. So that's the Thursday. So hopefully we have a little explorers, hopefully do it from Friday and Sundays. Forty-nine, as we were planning on doing it and go from there. And hopefully help America have a big time. So and the other thing, of course, is the parking garage that I've been asking for years behind movie theater slash CBS, so. We'll see. I will tell. And the other thing is I wanted to talk to um. Assistant on the rec committee as well. And Manny was there and we had this organization come in and feels. Uh, feels for kids, I think they're changing that name. They were phenomenal. And I'm not certain whether or not if you've scheduled an appointment with them yet, Jerry, or the board or anything.
I turned them down.
You did? You're gonna bring here ten million dollars in front of me.
Turned them down.
No, seriously.
Should we talk into?
Let's finish what you said.
All right, so it was a great presentation. I think Manny, do you agree or disagree?
Yeah, I think it was.
Right.
I I wanted more, but they were, they they came in and made a good pitch.
Right, so hopefully you guys will listen to them and we'll go from there. So, all right, we will look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Stay well.
Have a good night. Anybody else want to address the board? Uh, we're gonna go a little out of order. We're gonna take uh four. H, as my grandmother would say. Uh, which is uh resolution authorizing dispersal of tan proceeds uh to.
An American library. Uh, let me get this a little set up.
Uh. If you've paid absolutely no attention to the village over the past couple of months and uh. I've just woken up, there was, there was difficulty uh with the library's budget. Uh, and the library. Uh, asked the village. Basically to uh secure a loan for them. Uh, that would. Make sure that they were. Able to meet their obligations for this fiscal year. Uh, the library was created by an act of New York State in a referendum in the Village of America in nineteen ninety-one. Uh, they had been part of the Village of America before part of the arm of the government. And that spun them off into their own separate government. Uh, with their own separate taxing authority. Uh, and that vote is on the second Tuesday. Of, or the first Tuesday of December every year at the library. And that's what their budget gets approved, just like the school budget gets approved in a separate referendum. Uh, but the library does not have any authority to borrow money. Uh, some of you might remember uh. That way back, uh, I think it was two thousand seven, two thousand six. It was probably two thousand six. The Village of America borrowed a lot of money. Uh, to help the library build the wonderful addition. And I must point out that there's a gentleman in the room tonight, uh, ex-trustee Beyonessa. Who was very pivotal in the village doing that. And uh, it 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 spoke well of the board at the time and, you know, and uh. I wasn't always the favorite member of the board at the time, but that I believe was a very good uh project that they 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 bravely voted for. And it's been paying dividends these past fifteen years or so. Uh, so now the library. Is in a situation where where they need us as a community and we represent the community, right? They need us as a community to step in. And help them through these difficult times. Uh, what would the? Alternative? The alternative would be to do nothing, uh, to allow the library to perhaps close. Uh, for a period of time, for extended period of time. Um. That would hurt a lot of people uh whose voices, you know, don't appear uh on social media. Uh, whose families depend upon the services that the library provides. Uh, for whom the library is a refuge. Uh, and I don't think that's what we should be doing as a community. So, the library needs one point four million dollars. The the Village of Mamaronek voted uh. At a meeting passed. To approve the one point four million dollars in total, so that our staff. Uh, could go onto the bond market to borrow a ten, a tax anticipation note. Which would be paid off by the taxes that the library collects and gives to the village. Uh, so hopefully this will not ever affect the village's finances and it has to do with the library's finances. But what we decided to do was give the library the money in three tranches. Uh, the first being three hundred thousand dollars to meet their immediate needs that they need by June first. Uh, to meet payroll and other obligations that they have. Uh, and then we've talked to the library and, you know, we we. We expect, you know, controls to be put into place and different mechanisms to ensure the proper. Oversight of of their fiscal life, and I believe that that is in the process of happening. And then there'll be the second uh tranche. And then there'll be more, you know, oversight and then the third tranche. Uh, well, the second tranche is the biggest tranche, it's like eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh. But that also allows them to meet their obligation to the village. Uh, what they owe us uh for the uh bond that we borrowed back in uh. Back in the o's, the o's, the oh eight, oh seven, oh six, I forget which. So. I just wanted to explain that to people. Uh, there's a resolution in front of us. Uh, the library currently is is not going to fill two full-time positions and two part-time positions. They've taken other fiscally conservative measures to try and uh. Insolidate and to save money and to make this as painless as possible. Uh, so what we have in front of us tonight. Is a resolution to distribute three hundred thousand dollars uh to the Village of Mamaronek Library. Uh, to meet their obligations uh. For the beginning, this this part of the fiscal year. Uh, and it it it's imperative that they get that before June first. We have to go out and borrow the money uh in the bond market, but I've been assured that we won't have a problem doing that. Uh, by our staff, who I I want to point out worked really hard, Laura Visami, Augustine Fosco, Jerry Barberio. Uh, to make this happen. Uh, to make this possible because it's it's not, it's it's not a responsibility that we had. Uh, it's a, you know, it's a responsibility that we took on and I'm I'm glad to take it on. Because I think it really needed to happen, but the staff really went out of their way to facilitate this and I I want to thank them. Uh, so if anybody has any questions or comments about this, you can go up to the mic. If not, we'll just vote on it. Uh, see a gentleman. Two gentlemen. And this falls under the three-minute warning bill. Thousand.
Very happy to uh. See that um. The trustees and the staff were able to um. Have the money to help the library. I do have a couple of caveats uh that I have communicated. I think you saw my comments on uh next door where. It's not. We're giving three hundred thousand, we're giving eight hundred fifty thousand. I think it should be more. We're gonna give them up to eight hundred fifty thousand if necessary. And we're gonna give them up to two hundred sixty-four thousand if necessary. And that um they should continue to try to uh mitigate through fundraising and cost cutting. And that maybe after the three hundred thousand. That they might not need quite that amount of money. I also said that. At some time, when the uh forensics audit is done. That the uh, the board of the trustees for the library should hold a public meeting. Here, invite you as a board of trustees, televise it. And have the public comment. And have the uh forensics give a complete report. Where both boards and the public could ask questions and also have the auditor come in. Whether there was any problems would be wanted at all. And I just have the auditor say. What, what, how, what, what happened with the audit and were they lied to, were they misled? You know, why wasn't anything picked up with the audit? If the auditor doesn't want to come in, they should be immediately replaced. Not only for the library, but for anything they wanted in the Village of Mamaronek. I think one of their duties as auditors is in a situation like this, they should come before the public can explain. And the reason I said, say this is. Right now. You're trying to get trust back to the library. This would be the best way for the public to see and to get trust back to the library.
Thank you.
I am myself.
Circle the date on the calendar.
Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, I think I'll just uh. Uh, add to that.
Could you just give us your name, please, for the rest?
Oh, sure. Yeah, Mike Landau, uh, resident of the village.
That might be.
Hi, good to, good to meet and since you're. Um, so I think there's a lot of confusion around the impact to uh the wallets of. Uh, the the folks in this town and the impact to the village itself. Uh, of the the mess that has taken place in the library. And so, um, I think accountability and an and an audit and a clear way to understand the impact is really important. Um, and I actually came up to to say something because of a word you said, which is hopefully. It doesn't impact the village in any other way that you've described, but. Uh, I'd like to make sure that it's clear what the path is for when it will impact, if it does at all. Right, our, you know, I think on the agenda today is uh raising our property tax cap. Right, we just went through our last uh every ten-year review of our property taxes. So I think this is all really connected. So when you say something like, hopefully this doesn't impact the village. I, as a resident of the village, that that has me certainly concerned. So understanding there's a path where. It doesn't affect us and the the amount of taxes that uh maybe is raised as a result. But I think the clarity is really important, um, uh, not only for me, but the the folks in the community as well.
Thank you, Mr. Leno. Bill?
Good evening.
Good evening.
William, put us a two or five grand tariffs, support your efforts to help the library questioning. Whether we could ever recoup the money that was taken, displaced, misappropriated. However, in the same vein, we're going to give the money to a library whose parking lot may be demolished. And lose space for people to visit the parking lot as well as the Emmett Theater. So having a double-edged sword kind of, to me, seems to be going in opposite directions. Also, does the village have enough funds in there? Accumulated funds of over taxation to loan the money to the library and basically charge Marvin's a straight rather than going out and bonding. I don't know that and Tommy, you don't have to answer, but I'm just saying that it's. Which way do we go? It's funding, we're paying ourselves to pay ourselves back. If we have the money, we might as well loan it to them, pay ourselves the interest as opposed to paying it out on a bond. But my biggest fear is that we're gonna knock down a parking lot and they're gonna lose the residents. Visiting the library, which is going to be detrimental to them as the Emmett Theater.
Thank you.
Quick questions. Um. And I think it was week ago Monday when the library presented. Um, I believe the president said that the last six years of audits would be made available. Um, do you, do you know if those have been made available?
I guess question for the library.
Okay, well, hopefully they're gonna speak too. The other issue is the bond. Um, generally when this board approves bonds, the actual bond document is. Um, presented with the resolution. Um, I don't think it's been in here. Is it drawn up already?
It was approved already.
Okay, so will that be made public also?
It was made public when we voted on it.
You mean last week? Okay, I will take, well, thanks.
Look. All right. I will make the motion. Yeah, sure.
One, I think that, so I I the, I did not, I meant to check the library, I meant to check today to see if the if the statements were up. Um, I don't know if the library has put the statements up yet. Um, I'm sure that they've got a lot on their plate, but I'm sure they will because they said they would. And just in terms of. You know, the the question, hopefully it won't affect the village. I think the thing to remember is. If the library doesn't get the short-term fund, short-term sort of help. Um, then the village would be on the, and and the library, you know, ceases to exist, they're. They, they won't be able to continue to. Fund themselves with, you know, the annual budget. And then the village is on the hook for the between eight and nine million left in the two thousand and six bond. So this is really the tool the library needs to get over this hump and, you know, then we all need to work together and. And, you know, work with the library to make sure the library is thriving. Because if the library thrives, the library will be able to pay back the bond for the building. And the village does not want the library to default on the bonds. We don't want. To own the library or manage the library. So I think that's, you know, this is the short-term kind of. Uh, solution to avoid a bigger liability.
And to answer a question I was asked, uh, the village cannot lend out of our uh. We 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 researched, obviously, and the village cannot lend out of our surplus. We 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 can't give loans, but we can do this. This was, we looked, we looked all over to see what we could do, how we could fund this, how we could. Help them out, you know, under the confines of what's allowed under New York State law, and this was the only uh path that we saw. Sir?
You're the resident. They're ready. So I think I hear a lot of concern. I would like to reiterate that concern that there's a lot of hopes and hope to, and we don't think. But if we're literally lending money based on our bonds that we issue or receive. To the library, what is the guarantee that this does not directly affect residents? Because clearly, the only way that they're gonna be paying back this money is by increasing the taxes, their own taxes. Yes, it's not a village tax, but it's library tax. That goes to us, all of us directly, right? So we're just then funding this misappropriated funds. And what is happening to those funds that were essentially stolen. So I'd like to know what the plan is going forward. And I've been designated to all the village residents. Understand, not within a week notice, but sufficient notice for everybody to respond. Digested information. And and have informative and be able to stand here and speak out intelligently. Because I'm here for another instance, you know. That I like to discuss, you know, when it does come up, but again, I've been very short notice. Don't have time to, you know, formulate. A, you know, documented response, which it deserves. And we're expected to then, you know, defend our town when the decisions are already made for us without any sort of. I even see that when we are, you know, like. We're basically. We're basically being told to. Yeah. Yeah, go go away and good luck and decisions weren't even made. So I feel like it's being very dismissive. I just want to make sure that. All the residents here have a voice. In this and that we're not, you know, adversely affected, which it seems that we are.
Let let me just. You know, point something out. There's no other community. That allows people to comment upon. Agenda items, which is what we're doing right now. No other community.
I I.
I've served with other boards and it just doesn't. So this is not limiting. Your ability to comment, it's giving you ability to comment where most communities don't. And that that's, you could look around and I have.
And that's the honest about truth. So so what recourse do we have as residents, as the taxpayers, as the people putting this bill? To make those decisions.
Because it will let people to make those decisions.
And.
It's not, it's it's not pure democracy. Representative democracy. And so both the representatives to use their best judgments. And if you don't like those judgments, you change the representatives.
Or you can email. We do have, some of us have office hours if you needed to. Excuse me, talk to us during office hours. You can email any one of us who's on the board. To raise your concerns or have complaints. There's many ways to be a concerned citizen and have your voice noted. Even if even if this wasn't a space, right? There's many different ways.
But Matt, I point out also that the. Library has a tax district that is the village. Village residents, you, maybe you didn't vote in the election. They voted on the library board.
I voted for all of you standing right now.
Okay, well. They they had, they had an election and and their budget was voted on. So that so it's not, it's not us bringing it to you. You were already, you were already on the hook. Because because they.
To say they're already on the hook because of somebody stealing money is is not a valid answer.
Can I say something?
You can say something, sure.
Because because I think he raises good points and I think people are, I I think I think that good points are raised and I think people are confused and I think. You know, we don't have a crystal wall. We're all, we're all trying to figure this out day by day and I understand that it's short notice, but. But if we don't help the library in the short term, the village, the village and it's, it's, you know, I mean, it's. It's a library tax, it's a village tax, it's a tax on all of us, right? I mean, it's, that's, it's. It's not, it's it's separately levied, but it's. It's a tax on all of us. We don't help the library figure out how to survive. Then the then. It won't be a library tax that pays. The bond for the rest of the building. It will be a village tax. Or the village will have to sell a building that's not really purposeful for anything other than a library. So I'm, I know that that's not a perfect answer. And. I'm also sympathetic. I think that we should. I I did, I'm not in favor of limiting the comments from the public. But we'll try and the pub public can comment, but I, because we aren't limited, but. I do think that the library is going to release the forensic report when they get it. They promised to do that. They will put their, they will put their. Financial statements on the website, so people will be able to look at them. I don't, we don't know. How much was stolen, how much was just. Thought that was in a reserve fund that wasn't there. So we don't know the answers to that. So I think that those answers will be forthcoming. I mean, I encourage the library to get the information out as fast as they can. There's also a criminal investigation. I'm sure there's some stuff they can't talk about. So we're all kind of, you know, we're all kind of at sea here and we're. You know, I think the goal for most of the community is to keep the library afloat and to limit the taxpayers' exposure to the best we can. But it's not a perfect answer, but I think that's. That's that's the answer to date.
Okay. I'll make a motion. To approve this resolution. To give the library the first tranche, three hundred thousand dollars. So that they could remain open in this community will have a functioning library. On June first.
And we will vote again before the second.
We'll be voting every time we do this.
And we may not. We may not go all the way to the top. We may, we may give them less if if our. Second.
Paul Roll.
Speaker Rawlings.
Yes.
Yazir Reed, yes. Young.
Yes.
Lucas, yes. Mayor Murphy.
Hi. Okay, we're going back up to the top. Public hearing, public hearing on PLRG. Twenty twenty three local law to exceed property tax cap for fiscal year twenty three twenty four. This is proposed every year. We are not exceeding the property tax cap this year. We do this every year, kind of as a belts and suspenders thing in case we have to. In case we have to go over the tax cap, we have the ability to at the last minute. We don't have to. We're not going over the tax cap. We're well under the tax cap. Could you have the conversation outside, please? George. So. What I would like to do is open this public hearing and vote this down. We'll make a motion to open a public hearing. Paul Roll.
H C's Rawlings.
No.
Yazir Reed.
No, no, you, we'll just open the public hearing.
Oh, yes. I thought it was a voted down.
Trustee Young.
Yes.
Trustee Lucas, Mayor Murphy.
Yes. Okay. I'd make a motion. Now, this is gonna be a little strange. I'm gonna make a motion on on the. Application and then I need a second on that application and then hopefully we're all gonna vote no. Oh, I need. Already comments.
Yes, the same ones I made before. Not the library, it is budget issue. I keep saying the only thing we know about. The situation is we know nothing about the situation. There's been absolutely no transparency.
It's about the tax.
I understand. It's a public hearing, though, so. Are the audits gonna be made available? I would hope so. Those shouldn't need to wait for the forensic. Those are the past six years audits. And additionally, I just looked at the May seventeen agenda and there was no bond. The bond document wasn't there. Will that be made available in compliance with open meeting floor?
You have any comments about what we're doing here?
No, I was hoping maybe somebody would say whether. You'll make those documents available since you're giving three hundred thousand dollars out. I don't think anybody in this room doesn't want the library to succeed. But as they've said, they need to restore trust in the community.
They're in the lobby.
I'm sorry.
They're in the lobby if you want to talk.
I'm here to talk to the board because you're the. Or that's approving one point four million dollars. For a situation.
We're approving three hundred right now and the documents that you're literally asking, right? But even even the documents that you're asking for. Other individuals who just left and right outside. Who are the ones who need to post it, right?
No, this board needs to post it. As I said. This board generally, when it approves. Bonds, the actual bond document. Is made available to the public because that's the law.
And so Augie can correct me if I'm wrong, because I've never done a tan before. This is a new experience for me. But I think we had to authorize the. Staff to actually go out and get the tan. It's, is it different than when we're actually approving bonds that you've brought to us? We had to give you authority to go and do do the work to create the documents. That's my understanding.
That is correct, trustee Lucas.
So there, so we didn't, there wouldn't have been paper for us to look at last week.
We're not issuing a bond resolution. We're issuing a tax anticipation note.
Okay.
A short term note.
So it's a different process.
Yes.
But frankly, I'm wrong because I don't know about some stuff, but there a bond is basically you go out and ask people to. Invest in it.
We're not issuing a bond. We're issuing a short term note. A tax anticipation note. Tan.
Okay. So isn't, is it, it's my understanding that basically. People will buy, will invest in that note. It'll be offered at an interest rate. And people will buy it and that's how the funding is created. Seems to me there must be a document. That will go out on the open market. And that's all I'm asking for is that this board says it's voted on that. What did they vote on? Was it just the resolution or was there more?
They just voted on the resolution. The document you're talking about, the underwriter hasn't written yet. If you want, once the ten is issued, I'll get you a copy of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the explanation, Augie.
Oh, my pleasure.
Okay, I need a motion to close the public here.
So move second.
Call call it, please.
Trustee's Rawlings.
Yes.
Yazir Reed.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Yes, I'm gonna make a motion on the on the agenda item.
This is the voted down.
Yeah, you make the motion, then we vote it down.
That's a second.
Paul. You got a lot going on there.
No.
Yazir Reed. Young.
No.
Lucas. Mayor Murphy.
No, no, we just voted not to exceed the property tax cap.
That's, that's a little counterintuitive, but.
In spite of what you.
We should have all, yeah, we should have all voted yes, I think. I think that's.
That would have been, yes.
Did we vote it down properly? Do we need to redo this again? Okay.
In spite of what you may have read on the internet, we did not exceed the property tax cap. We closed it on one day, amending the village code to include fair and affordable housing. For all zones. We had closed the public hearing. We waiting for secret documents. Dan, you've seen the secret documents?
Yes.
And Bob, you've seen the secret documents? And are you fine with them?
I have not reviewed the substance, the environmental substance.
Been informed.
And and we're waiting for H C Z N, right?
No, that's, that's different one. We need to adopt the law. Somebody wanna make a motion to adopt the law? So moved second.
And we don't have to wait for anymore from the county, right? Because that was another, it was.
No, do we have to wait for the county? We could adopt the law.
I don't know what the status is with the county.
Dan.
I don't know either.
Was this, is Mr. Cutler?
This is for, this is for I.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, so at this point, you it needs to be referred to the county.
Okay.
So it's not ready for adoption.
It's not ready for adoption. Okay, that's fine. We'll we'll keep it on.
It's only been since November twenty twenty.
The next up is P L K, the rezoning of the hunter lot. This is another closed hearing and I want, I want to. We we. We presented this twice to H C Z M C. They had thirty days to respond. But they wanted another meeting, which would put us over the thirty days. So we have prepared our own. Consistency findings. I just want to point out that folks, as I know a lot of you are here because of the hunter lot and businesses that you have behind. What we're doing here is we're taking a lot that's falling apart. You know, if you, if you've been under that, it's not gonna last another ten years anyway. We are building a two tiered lot. And then building a building on top of that two tiered lot. We're not losing the two tiered lot. That'll still be there. With undoubtedly, there'll be some difficulty during construction, but that's usually worked out during the planning board process. And and I know there are businesses there and and I understand your concern. I really do. I've gone to some of the businesses there. But at the end of the day, what this is about is providing, you know. Market rate and below market rate, very affordable housing to scores of family in this community. Sorry, sorry. First of all. Do not shoot out from your audience. Right? It benefits the village because. Affordable housing helps the village maintain people who work here, people who grew up here, people who live here. I had a phone call from somebody this week whose family has been in this community for generations. Who's living in a house that's falling apart. Who doesn't have the the money to move, who doesn't have the money to fix up where he's living. He doesn't own it. He has rats running around and I couldn't help him. And it does benefit the village and I that is not in a an area that's up for debate here. You know, this this board decided. That that benefits the village. The village has, you know, worked hard for years and years. To give people an opportunity to remain in a community where they grew up, to give people an opportunity to raise their families and send them to good schools. And I think that's really important. And if 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 you don't, that's fine. We could disagree on that, but this board got elected running on a platform of doing that. Yeah.
A lot of people do know me in this community. And because I grew up with a lot of people. I cannot afford to live in this community. I would benefit greatly from living in that place. Me. So how would it benefit people? It would benefit me. Who spend majority of their life, her life. Giving. More than most people. To this community.
You're both describing me.
No, Billy, I get it.
Don't.
No, I don't, I don't.
No, sir, I'm gonna ask you to stop.
Can I, can I finish talking? Can I finish talking? But can I? But I'm just saying, you're saying.
I'll get up. You're condescending, sir.
I'm gonna finish talking. I'm gonna finish saying, I'll say one in my three minutes because I want to be respectful of everybody who has three minutes to talk. But there are a lot of people in this community who do need this. Whether you agree with it or not. And everything affects everybody on many different levels. I pray that the same type of. The same type of. Advocacy that you're doing for yourself. Was given when people were building in this community. Luxury apartments that people can't even afford to live in. Because there's many reasons as to why those 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 buildings, those developments that went up as to why people can't even afford to live in this community anymore. Even the middle class. There's many reasons. So the same type of of advocacy that you're doing for yourself, I hope that you did it many years ago when there was a different board. And just understanding. That we all and everything that we do and everything that we say affects every single last one of us. But you don't. Like, it's it's beyond ridiculous. And I get emotional about this because I'm passionate about people. I need more crystals.
My name is Vincent Tiamboro. I've lived my entire life in the village of America. I lived at one twenty nine New Street, two blocks away.
I lived at one twenty-nine New Street, two blocks away from Leilani Yarzer. Her father is the, the only real father I had, because my father died at a very young age. The description made of the people you claim that this parking lot's destruction and low-income housing is going to benefit, people you claim to discuss and describe are me. I can barely afford to live in this neighborhood. I have fought my entire life to get back into this community, and now you're lowering the standard that I fought my entire life to reach. And I ask one simple question, to what end? How does it benefit the entire community? Now, I can't see that. You, you have to give us some reasons. What we've been met with is condescension, condescending explanations of how representative democracy works. First of all, America was built on town hall meetings, and your power as a board comes from me, the taxpayer. So, if you wanna condescend to us, that's a tremendous strategy for reelection, I will say. You gotta give us some reasons if you're gonna sit here and say it's good for us. So, I listen to other people say that we need busing to get people around the town because traffic is an issue. We need, a lot of, a lot of people rely on the library. We can't close the library, right? Because a lot of people rely on it as a place to read, write, and socialize like I did, for free, if I couldn't afford anything else. Okay? So we, we can't afford the library, they've embezzled. Taxpayer's gonna foot the bill. You can't get through the village, it's crowded, we need shuttles, taxpayers are gonna foot the bill. Okay? Now you're gonna build low-income housing to diminish, and, and, and you're saying it's for the people in the village? The people who are gonna live in those buildings most likely are non-residents. If non-resident, if residents of the village live there, then you, you won't hear a word from me. If you wanna make that a caveat or a criteria for residents in the building that you have to prove that you are a member of the Village of Mamaronek community, that's fantastic. But that may not be what happens realistically. So again, if you wanna be fair and allow people to speak, give us the opportunity to speak, and don't have midnight votes and then discourage people when they wanna say something. Because again, you're taking liberties with terms like "good for the village." Isn't that, to be honest with you, you spoke about, uh, our trustee used words like "me." Well, it's not necessarily good for me until you explain how. And then maybe I'll be willing to accept it. Thank you for your time. If you wanna s, talk to me about this, like we talked about everything since we were kids, you could talk to me about it, and we don't need to get emotional because I have nothing but love for you.
Yeah, my emotion is my having to see word. Hold on, I'm gonna talk. Um, hold on, hold on. Not, because I don't often get to talk, no, because I don't often get to talk, I'm sorry. Because I, I wholeheartedly understand the comment. When we start picking and choosing who gets to live where, it presents itself to be a human being problem. We cannot pick and choose personally, personally, cannot, I do not believe in people picking and choosing where people deserve or should or can live. I understand there's, i- i- there's a dynamic within every community, it's not just Mamaronek. If you've been here for fifty years, you've been here for fifty years. You've been here for a hundred years, you've been, you've been here for two years. You're gonna choose that those people can live here? And we, and I think that oftentimes, when we think about just human rights, human rights, the basic right is to be able to live and to do what you need to do. If you, if you, if you worked hard, and then those are the people, you, you worked hard to get to where you at, I commend you. I really do. You did what you had to do to get you and your family or whoever where you need to be. But not everybody's afforded that. Not everybody's afforded that. That's the clear understanding. That is. I'm not, I'm done. And it's okay, I'm not trying to, I'm just explaining. I'm ex, trying to explain as to why affordable housing is not just what is happening in Mamaronek, it's happening across the country. It is. And, and it's, if you take away the affordability, if you take away affordable, and just say that people have a basic right to live, think about it in that, in that way. And I don't mean to misconstrue somebody's words, if that's, if that was what's, if that's what happened, that was not my intention. I'm giving an explanation as to why.
Mr. Tippett? Leilani? I understand where you're coming from. Uh, right now, due to health reasons and such, I may be looking to sell my house, and I am looking actively in the village. And trying to find a right place is a problem. I have my sister here, and we've looked all over, and we need certain conditions in order to live. Number one, they keep saying low-income housing, it's not low-income housing, it's affordable housing. You would have to be making estimated between forty and fifty thousand up to a hundred thousand in order to be eligible for any of these units. What we're, what you're looking to do, and by the way, this was my idea, I'm, I'm, I will take one hundred percent. Jerry will tell you years ago.
We're not calling it Tippett's Tower, right?
We're, we're working on it. But the whole idea is that they could have a two, a, a two-tier parking lot, a three-tier parking lot, depending on what the need is. I know the police department, when they redo Village Hall, is planning to move a lot of the cars out of that lot to open up more spaces. The idea is to have some studio micro apartments for people who just graduated, or for senior citizens who wanna stay in the community, retire, and still stay here. Also give an opportunity for starter families to have two-family or three-family units, and have a divi, a division, uh, between all of those. We're talking about police officers, we're talking about people who work for the, uh, the park staff, we're talking about people who work in the local restaurants, we're talking about local, the small business owners, all the laundry men, who are, own the dry cleaners. That's what you're, that's what you're talking about. You're talking about having the opportunity for people either to come to the village, get professional jobs, and be able to live in the community, starting police officers, you'd rather have them living in the village and something affordable elsewhere. And the idea is that, that, uh, to look at the income of people every couple of years, that way, when that police officer goes from sixty thousand to eighty or ninety thousand dollars, he said, you know, okay, you know, now, now it's time for the next person to come in and have a constant regeneration of affordable housing for seniors, for students who just graduated, for young families that are just starting out and not ready to buy the house yet. Sometimes you have families, they have, you know, it's a couple that have their baby for two or three years, and when the children, you know, when they have the second child, you know, that's when they look to buy a house in the community. That's the housing you're talking about here. You're not talking about low-income housing. And quite frankly, a lot of people are still gonna be left, left out in the cold because you're still gonna have to generate, it might be forty, it might be fifty thousand, it's not going for a little bit. Up to a hundred thousand dollars you're gonna still have to be making to be eligible for these units. And the fact that there isn't enough housing for people between fifty to a hundred thousand to stay within this village is a major problem. And that's why they're looking to do this affordable housing. And that's why, as a resident, long time, was had a lot of friends that were forced out of this village, and a lot of seniors that were forced out of this village, that's why I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane?
Hello, I'm Diana, and I'm here representing the Mamaronek Coalition for Affordable Housing. So we are a coalition of unity organizations. We're founded by the Washingtonville Housing Alliance and the Community Resource Center. Um, members of our coalition include, um, many faith-based organizations, I believe St. Thomas Church, WJBC, Larkmont Temple, and many of the churches and other churches in the Goxton area. Hundreds of members who have joined and been in operation since twenty twenty. Um, we deeply and wholeheartedly support this re-living for local reasons. Not only from the human perspective, but, um, you asked about who, who does this affect? I wanted to share a couple of numbers with you tonight. So, the, um, Section Eight Housing Toys Boucher Program for, um, the village and the town and Village Larkmont is run by the town, and there are ten thousand one hundred and forty-three people on the waiting list. Ten thousand one hundred and forty-three. When the applicant plans were accepted through a digital lottery, eight hundred people were drawn off of that list. And of those, six hundred and seventy of the accepted applications have gotten a voucher. And two hundred and sixty of those, of these applications have actually found housing here in Mamaronek. So we're looking at less than two point five percent of the need of people for affordable housing who are finding it in our community. And as the gentleman before me mentioned, these are not interlopers, these are not outsiders, these are our seniors. These are our host boys and leaders. These are recent arrivals and folks who've been here for many generations. This is our community. So, because of the numbers, and because of the humanity, and because of our shared faith, ambition for the United Community, we of the Mamaronek Coalition for Affordable Housing, we please support essentially. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Diane touched on a, a question I had, and maybe my understanding is incorrect, but I thought the county, um, it's, administers the fair and affordable housing, and the people who are in need are on a list just like was described. Um, is that true?
Well.
Well, we had a long conversation about this earlier, both with, with respect to whether the, the town is giving up the administration of the Section Eight vouchers as of, um, July, I think, right?
Yeah.
And, um, we are, we are in a pickle in terms of a unit that we have, to ask a developer to build, require a developer to build, and we don't know how to actually get it filled with somebody. It's an eighty percent AMI, so it's not a Section Eight voucher. So that's been a big conversation that we had today. So I, um, and I think Jerry's gonna spend some time tomorrow trying to figure out how we create a program for not this kind of project, not an entirely affordable
Yeah.
building, because that will, the, that developer is gonna have to figure out how to market it according to very rigorous standards. But what we do with the small numbers that we, that are being created as a result of the zoning code changes we made in two thousand nineteen. And we don't know the answer to that.
So essentially, there's no guarantee that if you need this type of, I believe, that. I'm not criticizing. There's no guarantee if you live in the community that you'll get a unit, because we really don't have much of that. And from what I see in developing, um, what's in the code, you know, what's expanded in non-residential areas, I own property in C-one districts. And I already see loopholes. The loophole in not getting these units is the fact that if you're under five and you're building something, or you have something.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking about a different issue, and that's an issue that we haven't, that this board hasn't actually discussed. Um, but to go back to Section Eight, you get a Section Eight voucher in Mamaronek, you don't have to use it in Mamaronek, so it's not, there, you know, it's there, that, you can use it where you can.
Right, so there's no guarantee that.
But this, but this may or may not be Section Eight housing, this is gonna be something that will be marketed, and the county has specific marketing requirements for how you market fair and affordable housing, and that will be done according to those kinds of standards. You're talking about something completely different.
If, if you can let her finish that, whatever, the, the statement that she was gonna state, because maybe other people on Zoom or in the, in, in the audience doesn't understand what you said, you're not talking about that, so I, I want.
So, what my point to a person who wants to develop property, um, it's very easy to avoid providing fair and affordable housing within a development by staying under what's required in the code. Four units instead of five, because five trips you over that balance. But, there's also the ability on a larger property, larger, larger development, to go to the zoning board for variance. So this is a difficult situation. That's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, can I say something real quick?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I just wanna point out that, uh, I, I, I knew this was gonna be an issue. This came up, this is, this was not slipped in, this, this was discussed in public multiple times.
Months.
In fact, in fact, when, when we voted on it, there was a crowd here for stuff that I even forgot what they were here for, and they were getting up and leaving, and Tom even said, "Don't leave, you're gonna miss the main event, the main event is coming up, we're gonna talk about," and, and they were all walked out muttering, and, a, a, and I was so concerned about that, I wrote up, uh, uh, the, the, the basics of it, and I sent it to all the local media, so they would, uh, so they would know about it. And only one, only the Loop picked it up, and that's where you found out about it, right? The Loop.
A public hearing, suppose.
What?
Suppose a public hearing.
The public hearing? No, we had the public here.
Oh, but it's closed.
Can I, can I, can I, I wanna, can I, I wanna address what Doreen said, because I think it went over most people's heads, and this is, so we have, there are two things that are going on here. We, the Board of Trustees discussed changing the zoning of the Hunter Lot, basically moving the zoning lot line, so it's, it's an R-five now, making it a C-one.
Yeah, C-two.
I'm making it a mi, it's a mi, it's a pretty minor change, and it's, and it's, and, and that's what, a, and that allowed us to, um, use it for residential construction, and we are making the decision that, uh, that it will be a hundred percent affordable, and the way you can get to those kinds of projects is if, you know, the state or the county or the village, whatever community, can provide the land. That's how you get to that stage, that's one thing. And that's, I think, everybody on this board is completely a hundred percent supportive of trying to get a hundred percent affordable housing building in the Village of Mamaronek, and I think there are people in this room who don't agree. And, and that's, you know, and that's a conversation, but, 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 uh, some people in this room, not, but what I think is, you know, uh, you know, I've worked on affordable housing a lot of my professional career, and I think we're not doing this the right way, because one of the things that, and the, Mamaronek Coalition talks about this, you really work to get information out and to build community support for it, and I think we had, we made a mistake by having that public hearing and opening it and closing it in one night, referring it to HCZM, and getting the secret documents afterwards. So people, so not everybody knew what was going on, and the, and the other thing that we never, ever discussed was changing the schedule of minimum requirements, and I think that's what HCZM, I mean, I didn't, I didn't watch the, their whole meeting, like, I guess it was last week.
Changing the scheduling of.
We changed the schedule of minimum requirements, and, 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 and the proposal for the change might be great, it might not be great, and for Greg, that's your question. It affects this, it's note four, and it changes the way we calculate open space. So instead of requiring five thousand square feet of open space per unit in a complex, we're now making it fifteen percent of the lot. And it, it's probably a simpler formula, it may be a great formula, uh, but it, it affects C-one, C-two, and the marine districts. There's an argument that we got today, which is a little late to be getting papers when you're voting on a law, especially a paper that's dated April eighteen. And shame on me, I didn't dig it out of the HCZM documentation. Um, and it, it, they basically argue that it doesn't affect the marine recreation and the general marine and commercial zones because they don't have residential there. But, you know, if, if it covers X amount of the village, then it's a, it's a type-one action, and we're supposed to do a more complete environmental review. So I feel, I, I'm very concerned because I a hundred percent support this building. I think it's, we need a new, we desperately, I mean, that's a scary parking lot. Just the steps are scary. We need a new parking lot, we, we can, this is the way we can create some units. Um, you know, the governor's housing plan didn't work, had it, had it passed, this would have.
We had to.
This would have, this would have helped us with our numbers, I'm sure. There will be something down the pike, it's something that, it's smart for the village to do. I'm a little concerned that we opened and closed the public hearing so quickly, that there, if, there wasn't an opportunity for people to talk, and we didn't do a good job in building community support. I think, you know, I think Diana is completely right, that this is something that's supported by a lot, a lot of people. That this is something that's supported by a lot, a lot of people, and it's incumbent upon all of us who wanna do these projects. To really make the case for how important these projects are, and how good these projects can be for a community.
We did get public comment at the public hearing, it wasn't like there was nobody there.
And, and hold on, uh, I have, I have, yeah, it's, it's, one second, sir, you, you'll give it up soon. Uh, I have written about this many times, we have talked about it in work session many times, we had Mamaroneck Coalition for Community here that night. Uh, but you brought up something about it being a type one action, Greg, could you a- address that?
I don't, I'm asking, is it enough, is there enough?
I'm asking.
But I, my, but the question, I, I'm based on my question, and what I wanna know is, it affects. It's, and it's not, it's not the changing of the zoning, it's changing the schedule and minimum requirements, right? And it covers five zoning lots. Well, you say, I, 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 I think I find five anyway, it covered five, it's transit zones.
So, so the actual language in the seeker law, it doesn't say, um, the adoption of changes affecting twenty-five or more acres in the district. It says the adoption of changes in the allowable uses within any zoning district affecting twenty-five or more acres in the district. So this kind of no could not change.
So it's not, because we're not changing your use.
Not changing the use, which, which I believe was explained before.
We never discussed the notching as a board. No, no.
It's not, it's, I, I'll give you an opportunity, please just, no, sir.
Hey, doing, uh, I'm Greg Morales, I'm a village resident. So I'm hearing all this about affordable housing, and I agree with affordable housing in Mamaroneck. We, we're probably a village that has. More affordable housing than a lot of the villages around here, and a lot of the towns and a lot of the cities. Um, my concern is this, we're looking to build. Uh, a building on a parking lot that's been falling apart for, I don't know how long. What level are we building here in an area that has. Already concentrated amounts of vehicles, overcrowded schools. We have infrastructure, bridges that are falling apart, bridges that are closed right now, with, with blocks going across, we can't even, we can't even go across. Have we looked at all areas to make sure that flooding has been mitigated? Because I'll tell you what, I lived in an apartment in. By Gertrude Avenue, and that was flooded three times. And who's, who's addressing all this? And all the homes that are down in the flats, who's addressing that? That's all, that's all affordable housing. Who's addressing the vehicles, displacing people that are getting flooded out? Who's addressing all that? Now we wanna build affordable housing up here without addressing all of the other residents that are dealing with these problems. Are dealing with infrastructure problems, then you wanna displace taxpaying businesses. From some of these buildings to build, to build this infrastructure. To, for affordable housing over here, is that what I'm understanding?
We're not, we're gonna displace any.
So, so that, that structure is not gonna affect anybody in the surrounding area.
I'm, I'm, like, like any construction, I'm sure there'll be. You know, inconveniences with the construction. At the end of the day, there'll be a two-story garage that the village owns and controls, like this. And then we'll be building on top of it.
And how tall will the structure be that goes?
The R P hasn't been issued yet, we don't know.
We don't know yet.
Yeah, I mean, and we're not doing it.
No, 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 no. You have, no, the first step is to change the zoning, that's the first step. See. Again, uh, if, could you please, let's, let's, let's not, let's try not to call it community, it's, please, folks. The, the, the first step is to address the zoning. Then the village will put out an R P, and the R P will be answered by people who wanna build all for them. Then that process will, like any other process, will go to the planning board, or any other board that, that needs to address issues. Like any other building. And then issues like access to the building behind it during construction, that's part of, that, that, that's usually part of the plan. Or, for how you build the building.
Understood. So, I'm in construction, commercial construction in Manhattan, so I understand how to build. That gentleman's point, uh, before, behind, uh. Former CBS in the movie theater, there's a large area there, that if you built a taller structure and, and, uh, parking, municipal parking. That would fit nicely in that area. We're gonna come here, we're gonna change the whole. Uh, skyline of this area, which is, I mean, this is, I've been here since I was a little kid. It might, we came up here, my parents fought in scratch to come up here and try to get a piece of land and a home here, so. I, I'm telling you, like, there's a lot of us that want to keep. The, the, M- Mamaroneck, the way it is in a nice. Uh, 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 open area, we don't wanna congest it, it's becoming over congested. You can't get to the highways, you can't get down the road. In the morning, you can't get anywhere within five minutes. It's a half an hour to get from. From up the hill down to ninety-five. So, I mean, what are we doing for the infrastructure? What are we doing to support the infrastructure? What are we doing to help the schools with the overcrowding?
Yeah, okay, I, I hear your concerns, uh. We, we have done a lot with the flooding with the Army Corps of Engineers Plan, and we have other, uh. We, we've just approved money for people who get flooded to, uh, try and mitigate some of that. In their, in their homes, it's in, it's in the budget. Uh. Just because there are problems doesn't mean you don't do anything else, Mike, right? Uh, I'm a big supporter of affordable housing, I grew up in affordable housing in the city. Uh, for my family, uh, it allowed, we got a two-bedroom apartment with four kids, my mom and dad. And, uh, but it was safe, and it was clean, and it allowed my parents to, uh. Prepare for our future, and quite frankly, it allowed us a chance to step up. Uh, that we would, that we wouldn't have had, I don't think. Uh, and I think that part of, you know, what. Government is for is to allow people the opportunity to succeed. And the opportunity to succeed is not always equally distributed, and the outcome is not always gonna be equal, I understand that. Not all, uh, you know, gonna, gonna have the same level of achievement, or have the same level of, uh, effort. But there should be an opportunity to succeed. And I know a lot of children in this community who are living in, uh, apartments that were flooded and devastated. And moved back in, and it, it's not much better. Uh, there, there wasn't a lot of improvement, that are dealing with, you know, vermin, and that are dealing with, uh, you know. Awful conditions, and they live in this community. And we have, in the past twenty years, thirty years, forty years, kind of. Warehoused all of our affordable housing in the wettest spot in town. So we've basically said, you know, uh, all right, you know, we're gonna build affordable housing, we're gonna build it in this area where, you know, it floods all the time. And what I like about this is, it spreads that out. So that, you know, there's people, uh, who haven't flooded, uh, gonna have an opportunity to live in a place that doesn't flow.
So we're not addressing the flooding, we're not addressing the flooding, we're not addressing the infrastructure.
You must have misheard.
So everything that's down there is gonna keep flooding.
But that's not what I said, that's not what I said.
We'll just keep moving everybody up, so we don't address everything down there.
Sir, that's not what I said.
And, and, and we, excuse me. We talk about nothing but, I mean, you, you, if you have, you must not have been paying attention to what we do, it's all about, uh, flood mitigation. Flood, flood mitigation is our number one priority. We, we allocated, what, one point?
How much free six?
One point four million dollars to, to work on the, uh, wo- wo- work on the, uh, uh, the rivers. Uh, uh, we've, we've, we, we went, uh. Eyeball, eyeball with, with the D E C, uh, to, to, uh, on permits, and we've been, we've been, we, we've been pushing this. I mean, to say we're not doing anything on flooding, it's just.
When is that plan coming to?
The plan, it's underway now, people, we've been in the river. I mean, that, that, that's why, that's why this, that, that statement sounds.
Wait until the next flood.
I encourage you to, um, go to, you know, the next flood meeting is tomorrow, and you can listen to all the, um, updates that the. Flood committee has been doing, that the board has been doing, not just as the board, the village staff have, everybody has been doing to work on. Flood mitigation in this community. We've been doing a lot, and money that people have not even seen in this community has been. Allocated for flood victims in this community. And it's, I don't think any other, I don't know how many boards have literally done this. But money, and that's like because of advocacy work, people pushing, saying that this needs to be done for these. For this particular group of people who have been affected. So please, if you can, be, come to the meeting tomorrow's at seven o'clock, we are here, and we're, we'll, we will be on Zoom, so you.
We need people involved, we need them involved.
Definitely, you know, all I'm saying again is, we need to fix our, our, our problems before we start adding more, that's gonna.
We can walk and chew gum at the same time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up.
Hello again, wasn't planning on speaking before, but this was the meeting, so I'd just start off by saying, I'm not against affordable housing.
Right.
All for, right. The two problems here are, like, my Chris is being saying. The climate, the effects of addition, that many additional people in the town. Overburdening our already stressed school systems, right? Traffic is one thing, buying traffic, it is what it is. Have we done any studies on the infrastructure? Yes or no?
Yeah, lots.
Have, anybody reviewed them, any engineers, any city planners?
It's all, it's all we do.
I know it might sound funny.
No, no, it's not funny, but it's.
Yes, your answer is yes.
Can we pause it and, and give, give a quick answer, because the, these two gentlemen here spent. Here on our moratorium study where we really figured out the build-out, so I think there's a feeling that the infrastructure can handle this. Based on what our build-out was gonna be, for Greg, first meeting.
So, not an engineer, um, so I can't necessarily say that I, like, scope out the sewer system that goes down there, but I can say that it's a very short run to the. Right down to that. Um, so I, I don't think it's a turn out of bulk or.
Not, not, not just the sewer system, right? It's, it's the city itself, and the people, village.
Um, construction.
So, we have that problem, it's, you know, reviewed lightly, if at all. We have our, our school, which I have two children in, right now. It's, it's already quite crowded, continuously adding on and adding on and adding on, losing open space for these kids. Filling it with dog parks, right? We have the least amount of fields. Per capita of, of students of any, any other school besides maybe New York City.
Is it, you're talking about M A S, or are you talking about R next, like, what, what? You're talking about M A S?
Right, so our kids are basically playing in a parking lot. And then there're gonna be even more kids, nothing like, I'm, I don't, I'm not saying I don't want more kids in my kid's school, not, not the point, but the point is. Is that that needs to be addressed before we continuously add to the population. There was a moratorium on multi-family housing. Then all of a sudden they got lifted, and now we're continuing, so it's not about the affordable housing, no issue with that. But we also have a downtown that has smoke shops, and who knows what kind of apartments above that? Forty-year-old, forty-year-old antique shops. And people, and, and open storefronts that are vacant, wanting to be filled by smoke shops. Do I want my kids walking down that street? Like. What, what efforts are put into the city? I hear all this talk about providing a place for people to live. But providing a place for people to live is providing the quality of life for those people first, before adding more people into there.
Um, so.
We've addressed, we've addressed, it's, it's, it's on our work session, it's, it's, it's on everything we've done, but that's not what brought you down here, is it? What brought you down here was affordable housing.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so that's it.
Because you're building another apartment.
And that's the only, that's what got your attention. It wasn't our attention on, on, on business recruitment, it wasn't our attention on, on the parks, it wasn't on, on, on bike pads, it wasn't. Yeah, we've been doing it all, but that's not why you came down here.
Right, because that is overburdening this town.
That's the problem, that's the problem.
Not affordability, don't get me wrong.
Okay, yeah, okay.
I'm gonna address the school issue, and.
Meanwhile, I can't, I can't improve, like, it's, it's hard enough for me to get a permit to improve my own house.
And we're.
Just to, you know, better the town. But you're rezoning freewill and adding more units to this town. Decreasing free space for all of the residents that are here already. We moved here for a reason, because of how, you know, how it is. So that's all, I just want, I, I just like to reiterate that there's, it feels like there's little effort into it. And if there is effort to it, then maybe you should be announcing it and providing it to the town, so everybody can see all of that work that's being done.
So I would address the school issue in terms of people talking about overcrowding and how new housing comes in the community and. Brings overcrowdness in the school. M A S is a problem, and I've stated that even when I was running, like, it, it is overcrowded, but that's not because of the, necessarily. Because of the development in our community. You have large-mind students being able to come to M A S to, to take, to do the, uh, Dos Caminos program. That's a school board issue, where they don't allow just the, uh, just, i- i- M A S kids can't go to other schools. That, but that is what it is. Hold on, hold on, you can't, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you.
I'm just, I'm just giving, I'm just giving, I'm not giving dialogue, I'm just addressing issues that was spoken on. There are so many issues that, like, and, and again, what Lou said. We have addressed, we have come, we have tried to, are still addressing a lot of issues that keep coming up in this community. Keep coming up. We are trying to come up with new, new ways, whether it's, it's, it's parking, whether it's recreation, our fields, got. There's so much go- going on within three, like, three different municipalities, village of large mind, town of Mamaroneck, village of Mamaroneck, that affects us all. And I pray and hope that each and every, or one of our residents can go to those other municipalities. And, and do the same type of advocacy work for yourself in their communities, because we cross-reference each other all the time, because we have once, we share a school district.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, there's, there's more people who want to speak.
I mean, I, it. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll, I'll be quick. I did just wanna respond, um, with some facts about our school enrollment, because that seems to be a crux of the issue. So the two thousand eighteen, eighteen school enrollment across the state was fifty-five hundred. School enrollment in, um, two thousand and twenty to twenty-one was fifty-four hundred, and the school enrollment for twenty-one, twenty-two was fifty-three hundred, and it continues to be. This, this district is in the plan. The enrollment is in the plan, you may have heard otherwise, you can pull from a publicly accessible website.
Sir, sir, sir.
Sir, you have to stop.
Talk to outside on the way out if you want.
That's the aggregate information. On school enrollment across the M R S state, so that's a publicly accessible figure that you yourself.
Address the board, please.
On any, um, website, so I do wanna say that I think from a school enrollment perspective, that this new construction is beneficial, because without enough enrollment. We'll lose state and federal funding that'll allow us to keep the schools open. And we'll have to shutter them like other towns in Westchester, like Bedford and Vermont. We don't have enough enrollment in our community, our schools will be shuttered. So in order to maintain a vibrant community, we need school-based kids, and right now, we're in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. You just jumped in front of somebody.
Said you went outside, I'm sorry. To address the C, the various zones that this, I know you're doing legislation particularly for this. But it also affects its other zones, zoning districts in non-residentialist districts. Many of these zoning districts are in flood zones. I sat on Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission, learning, and we were supposed to complete. A watershed management plan, which would have dealt with flooding from the year two thousand and five. Mayor Murphy, you were chair of Harbor Coastal Zone, two thousand and four and two thousand and five. To this day, that watershed management plan has not been completed, and the last thing I'll add is. You're all doing a consistency determination, because I guess of our coastal zones. Information, you can't give them time and can't provide them with information. To do an advisory consistency determination, but how many of you have dealt with the L W R P? The Consistency Manual, okay? And have had consistency training, because the last time that. And have had consistency training because the last time that was done was in two thousand fourteen. So like my email said. And I'm getting angry. You can't do this blindly. You must evaluate all the environmental resources. At impact six zones. That's what the change in open space is dealing with. And flooding isn't the only environmental resource. So please do this properly because you do not wanna give. Anybody any opportunity to litigate this as it can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, two more, just two more questions. Uh, one was. Uh, being that there are students from from uh other elementary schools in our district coming to our our school. Uh, are we considering building housing in, say, Larchmont Village, Larchmont Manor? Or any of these other parts of Lomarina? Are we considering that so that we can just kind of spread? Uh, the the school load out to those schools.
We're not responsible for their municipality, so I'm sorry.
The town of American is is considering an all all affordable development.
Okay, and then uh.
I don't know where.
Okay.
I believe the village of large.
And then to the uh uh statistics. Uh, what I'd like to see with the breakout is actually between uh. Uh, elementary school uh enrollment. And then middle school and then high school, how that drop rates and who's who leaves elementary school and goes to private schools. I'd really like to see the full.
Please address, address some comments.
I'd like to see the full gamut of the of the information that you provided for the schools in the declining uh enrollment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more comment, please.
Okay. Yeah. It's Richard Elias, business owner, uh, in one of those buildings that would be affected the most. The zoning is above my pay grade. Um, however. Parking, uh, you keep saying that you're gonna be keeping the same amount of spots that you have now in the future development. However, from my knowledge, if you put in residential housing, you have to have parking spots per bedroom in that development. And if with the numbers, which again, I know the planning hasn't been done, you're going to have to now go three levels. At the minimum, it seems like to allow that to happen. And now we're dealing with if you only have three on top of that. We're really having the tallest building in all of America since it's up on the hill. Um, and again, I'm sure it'll be very aesthetically pleasing and I know everything is great and I understand all your passion for affordable house. Um, I think. Your passion is very commendable. I think it's almost too much to be sitting up there with that amount of passion because as you said, it's about you. And as a board, I think it should be about everyone and I am, I I applaud your efforts to this extent. However, I don't really think it was brought through as far as what's gonna happen to parking around here for port. For the meetings, for the emblem, for the library during construction, which we know will take. Three, four years from. Trouble in the ground to when we're probably done. If everything goes well. Two years.
Yeah, I'm thinking too, yeah.
Okay, so typical government add fifty percent.
We're not the bill.
I I understand that, but what I'm saying is you don't have the control of that. So if they go long and now we're three years. We're still under a situation where parking is a big issue. Access to those buildings are a big issue. The fire department, they can park on the street because they can park on the street, but most other people can't. But we also have a handicap accessibility issue with our building that is paramount to the people that are the have nots. As we're talking about the people that portable housing, you also have disabled people who need to access. That building. And I would like to see the plans for any developer to enable that going forward.
I agree.
To have that done. And as long as all these things are set, it seems like. The overall scheme of this seems very large for this street. Uh, so as long as, you know, that is addressed. Uh, there seems to be that we have already a change in the zoning that's gonna happen. That was already happened. Well, that's about to happen, um, so that uh all these other issues, you know, follow follow suit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your, thank you for your input.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to uh.
Do we have a consistency determination?
We have that in front of us.
Where? I don't have.
So you're back.
It's on the backup.
Greg, you have it. It's in a resolution.
I have.
A resolution.
You have, you have the resolution.
But that's. But it doesn't really address the policies and it's not.
You have to do is say it's consistent. You don't have to address each policy.
We have to, we have to address the policies. If we're not gonna accept the HCM, you know, I.
HCM didn't give us.
HCM didn't. Didn't finish theirs. They had a special meeting.
They had two meetings.
Okay, so we're gonna hurry. We are required. To actually do a consistency determination and I don't think we wanna do something that's procedurally wrong. Because. Somebody may complain.
Greg, are you fine with the consistency determination?
I'm fine with it. Um, it's it's your discretion if you wanna go through all forty four policies right now.
You you do have the the focal assessment for.
Yeah.
And the commentary that was prepared by. Our consultants. And the professionals who guided us through this.
And and this is just the the zoning change. It's not an actual project that all that'll, all that'll happen uh when when uh something.
So and I think we would have been better served by just doing what we said we were gonna do, which was rezone the Hunter Lot and not change.
Well, we we couldn't have zoned the Hunter Lot without changing that because it would require five thousand feet of open space per unit, which is absurd.
But.
Absolutely absurd.
We never had a conversation at a board meeting that we were going to make this change. So that hasn't been really made public and that hasn't been made public until tonight. We, I mean.
Nora, it it was in all our backup.
It was in the back.
Let me, let me finish, please. Let me finish, please. And it was, it was obviously discussed in the community. So it wasn't like it wasn't known. We've gotten letters about it. We've gotten information about it. There have been many emails going around the community about it. In uh Oriente and in Shore Acres. And, you know, this this this, just to say it it's unknown or people didn't have a chance to comment, I I don't believe that's truly accurate. And.
I I I think that we're doing a disservice to our commitment to affordable housing by not being open and transparent about how we did this process and about having a very short public hearing. And I I hope it doesn't come back to bite us because I really think this is an important project. And I I I I'm very conflicted because.
You voted to close the hearing, too.
I voted to close, I did, I voted to close the hearing. I was so, I was actually shocked. I couldn't believe we were doing it. I was shocked.
Okay.
And I was shocked and I would tell you that the, because we hadn't discussed this footnote. Um, about changing the schedule of minimum requirements. I. I didn't really realize it until until I started looking at the documentation that went to HCM. So my bad, I didn't. Understand what we were doing with the schedule of minimum requirements, but it was never discussed at the board and I don't know if anybody else has ever looked, we we never, we didn't, I mean. Tom, we were gonna, we had it on our hearing for February the thirteenth. It was on our, it was. And we were gonna have a on a work session again and we didn't have it on a work session. We didn't have a local law in front of us and then we scheduled. We just one night scheduled the local law without much discussion. So. I I I've just, I I don't think we're, I.
I'm sorry.
I really do think this is a good project. I think this is what we should be doing for the village and I'm very, very concerned that we have been sloppy with procedure, which. Can come back to bite us and not open and not as open with the public as we should have been and. You know. The first rule about trying to get affordable housing in a community is to is to do what 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 Diana's group has done is to build. Community support for it. And I feel like we've lost an opportunity here because we. You know, at the very early stages, we have a division. So I mean, I'm supporting this, but I'm I'm very conflicted. So can I?
Make a motion. Let's 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 move on to the motion. I'd like to make a.
I just had a question because sometimes.
Go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
No, 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 it's a simple question. I was gonna make the motion, but um. How many times to, are you suggesting, and I'm not trying to go back and forth, but well, how many? Times are you suggesting that um in any situation, not just this one, that something has to um go to the public, right? Um, because. This is something that definitely has been in in transparency, regard regarding transparency, has been on the um on our agendas for for a minute. For a minute. And if if nobody can say a minute, it's been on there for a few such for a few months. Yes. So um. And then to garner the the. The support of the public, whether it's for or against. Do you 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 want two more? Do you want two more public hearings? Do you want two, three more public hearings? Or do you want three more pu- public sessions?
No, uh, what what I, what I'm saying is we committed to to make the in the zoning range. We didn't commit as a board to. We never discussed changing the schedule of minimum requirements, which clearly has to happen because they would need a variance to build what they wanna build. So that that schedule's being changed. That schedule is, you know, it it may be, it may be something that we should be doing. I don't think that we've really evaluated the, you know, the environmental benefits of this. We didn't, I don't think we're was really even aware that this was happening. You know, maybe you were and I just missed it, but we didn't discuss it.
You got memos about it.
We didn't get a memo about this.
Yes, we did.
Not till, not.
Well, we did.
Um, I went through all of the records, so let's not have it. Okay, so. I I I, you know, we're at the stage that we're at the stage. I think we should have had HCM. Do their consistency determination. I think this is very reminiscent of a previous board that Tom and I railed against when we were moving brands five and a half years ago. Because HCM was being ignored and that was something that we complained about. Um, I know Tom and I are both very familiar with the LWRP because Tom was on the board. I helped rewrite it. I helped rewrite the revision to it. And um I'm not sure anybody else on the board has ever read the LWRP or knows what the policies are. And then, I mean, why would anybody? But because it's not something that they've had experience with, but I feel as though. We had a really good opportunity to do this cleanly and without somebody contesting it and I'm 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 and I'm I'm sorry. That we had a very short public hearing and we didn't now, I mean, probably the public is here now because. They've, because they, because they finally found out about it.
Story about it and sent it out to a, I did it myself. We did it ourselves.
Anyway, fine.
Plenty of time to 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 set our positions. Okay, let's just move on with it.
Great, I'd make the motion. That we adopt this local law. I second.
Sally.
What was the motion? I'm sorry.
The doctor law.
To rezone and.
Yeah, yeah.
The resolution, the motion is to adopt the resolution in your pack, which includes the secret determination, consistency, determination and the adoption of the law.
Yep, so say that. Determination, the change of law, what's the third thing?
Consistency.
And the consistency.
Okay, second, I second the the motion to those to do those three things.
Trustee Rollins.
Yes.
You guys will read.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Yes, and I just wanna say, I I appreciate. All the effort that's been put into this.
I appreciate all the comments.
I appreciate the comments too. I don't agree with them all, but. It's a different point of view and it's 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 never easy building affordable housing. And change is very difficult.
What what I didn't want is I didn't want us to do this and then have people say it's not through. Uh, and I said, but. No one was paying attention when we, when when I tried to get people to to do the story. They were writing about those things, so I I had to do it myself.
And and I've I've sent out. Many emails about this project. Informing the community about it. Well, anyway, that being said, we we haven't got to the agenda. Uh.
I just, I encourage people, I do really, I know, I know, but can, I'm sorry, Tom, it's ten o'clock. It is ten o'clock, but I encourage people to look on the uh on the work work sessions and the agenda on 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 the website every week. To know what's going on in your community. That's it.
And for those of you that are concerned about. Access to the building or using the building. Please attend, you know, when when this finally starts, which, you know, God knows this is government. Uh, when when that'll actually happen, please attend the planning board meetings, voice your concerns about access and about, you know, uh. About about, you know, construction and how that'll go. They they do give conditions in that uh venue that that could. Mitigate or ameliorate some of your problems. Okay. Thank you all. All right, uh. Just one more public hearing. We gotta adopt the budget. Public hearing. This, this is like a whole mess of resolutions.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming, yeah. Try and go easier in your tactic. Where you going?
You might wanna hang around for this.
No, it's not.
Okay, please start talking for the audience. All right, you know. We need a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
All in favor.
All right.
Plan to just. In connection with the approval of the village of American, but but the board trustee should adopt the following resolutions. These are the resolutions we have to adopt, items A through K. So sta- starting with item A, the budget resolution. Uh. The appropriations of forty four million, seven hundred fifty four dollars, seven hundred fifty four thousand, two hundred seventy one dollars. Proposed change increase of one hundred thirty one. Thousand, five hundred seventy two dollars for adjusted twenty twenty three budget of forty four thousand, eight hundred, forty four million, eight hundred and eighty five thousand, eight hundred and forty three dollars. Uh. So the tax levy. Uh, the adjusted tax levy is twenty eight thousand, uh, thirty four thousand, six hundred and fifty five dollars. Uh, the rest of the uh. The rest of the revenue is from various fees and appropriated fund balance. Need a motion to adopt the resolution?
Some, sorry.
Second.
Full roll, please.
Trustee's wrong.
Yes.
You guys will read.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Lucas, yes. Mayor Murphy.
Hi. All right. The next is a resolution adopting a budget for the fiscal year commencing June first, twenty twenty three, which is. Our our budgets are June first and May thirty first. And ending May thirty first, twenty twenty four, making appropriations for the conduct of the village government and establishing the rates of compensation for officers and employees for such appearing. Uh, by seeing resolution put in. Uh, need a motion?
So move. Second.
You wanna say something?
Yeah, I I just wanted to do a a quick uh. On the budget, uh, there's a couple of questions I wanted to ask. Um. For the assistant harbor master, is this budget still, we have twenty thousand dollars in that position? And it doesn't have any money for the naturalist?
Isn't. No, naturalists is funded. The naturalists isn't.
It was unfunded in the in the in the budget so far because physician hasn't been uh, the official uh physicians adopted but hasn't been hired yet.
Not hired. Uh, the county has a backlog of many, many.
Right.
New titles that they haven't approved yet, not just for our municipality, but for others.
So the fin- the financing for that isn't in this budget?
Correct. So the twenty thousand is in for the assistant harbor master.
Correct, and there's nothing in for the assistant naturalist.
Because you're gonna go with a different method instead of waiting for the county. I mean, bulked up our other line for salary.
Okay, okay. And the last one is, uh, we did take the police cars out, but um what did we do with the twelve thousand dollars that we needed to um. Uh, make the police cars uh uh road ready. That normally Vincent does. Is that back in the budget or is that gonna be something that's gonna be addressed when the police cars coming?
Yeah, so there's two twenty that's being used, two hundred and twenty thousand is being used out of our money.
Yes.
We're trying to, we're gonna make sure that everything's included in that two twenty as we order it.
Okay, thank you.
So and we just grabbed a couple of cars recently to reuse the equipment, so that'll help offset that cost.
Thank you.
Now, my observation um is, and this has nothing to do with Jerry and CF. They did a terrific job. I have. I am directly directing, uh, directing my comments to the board. When Jerry first proposed the budget, there were, there were, there were uh, problems with health and pension went right up, but we've also increased staff. So the original budget came in and it was looking for an eight or nine percent increase. And the board decided that you didn't want that increase to be in your property tax. So the staff went back and 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 using sharp pens and a little bit of imagination, was able to get it under one point, under the two percent. And that's what I'm uncomfortable with. I'm uncomfortable with reducing the police overtime from one point one million back down to six hundred and fifty thousand. I'm uncomfortable in taking the police cars out of the budget. I'm uncomfortable with uh, some of the fees. Now, it might all come out. Good, I says I'm very uncomfortable with the sewer fund and 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 the math with the sewer fund. I think it's greatly inflated. I mean, if you actually go by eighty percent of Jerry's uh, benefit package, you're saying Jerry's, Jerry's uh, benefits is a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. You know, you know, or or some around with that, that, you know. His benefit package, you you're talking about twenty percent of eighty percent of what he gets paid is being deducted on the sewer cost.
Twenty percent.
Twenty percent of eighty percent, eighty percent of his salary is a hundred and eighty, he doesn't get a hundred and eighty thousand in benefits.
So, so the eighty percent is our fringe betting benefit in the aggregate. That's for all the employees, right?
But that, that, that's, yeah, but that's not, you know, that's something that has to be adjusted because you're not all the employee, you're probably around fifty percent. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just giving, giving turn off, but given the twenty percent, it it was, it was, it, it was, let's say, enhanced to help get under the cap. And all the fees and the sewer fund and things like that are all regressive taxes to the taxpayers. It hits the lower and middle class more than it hits the wealthy. I says, when you do the sewer tax up ninety percent, do you really think that Flagler Avenue flushes their toilet ten times more than somebody over on Fifth Avenue? Remember, you don't, you you don't count in the sewer your water usage for summer for lawns and pools and such like that. When you raise fees, if I'm trying to fix up my house in in uh, in Washingtonville and I'm making eighty thousand dollars, it affects me a lot greater than somebody making three hundred thousand dollars that lives in Oriente. You know, um, the, the one caveat that that I would say is even if, even if there was a problem with this year's budget, you are gonna get a lot of FEMA money coming in. So you're pretty much covered, but even with record money coming in from sales tax, we double the sales tax in in a couple of years, even with raising all the fees, even with uh, certain cuts in the budget, we still have to go into, you know, we still have to go and have six hundred and fifty thousand dollars within uh, our reason, our, our unassigned fund to balance the budget. And at some time, uh, the budget has to balance itself and the board has to pay for what they want. You know, if it, if it's through, if it's through property tax and the property tax has to go up, you know, there's gotta be some honesty, look. You know, this, if this is what the, the community demands and these are the services the community wants, then this is what the plus is. That's why I don't have a problem with with staff on this. Staff has put together a program based on what you want and the community voted for you. My problem is I don't like being very aggressive, looking at fees, uh, some, some of the cuts that were made that I don't know or that didn't come to fruition, uh, you know, uh, did we, do we still have the hundred thousand dollars for the boat rental? Would that money actually come in? And there's still a lot of adjustments that have to, that have to be made to the budget over the course of a year. And and there's, there's, there's nothing there, there's, there's no, you know, flexibility. And then, then the other thing is you have a cash flow problem you're gonna eventually have is as you lower the amount of money that you have and you're on the side of reserve funded, this is not your fault, but you have water, sewer, a ton of major projects all coming on at the same time. And you have maybe twenty million dollars that you can borrow against, once you hit that number, you gotta go to bonding. And if it forces you to go to bonding sooner, then 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 you, then you have a greater problem with paying. And that's why, you know, you can bond, you can bond everything, anything and everything. But if you don't start to take things like police cars, like fire chief cars, some of the trucks, and have that as part of your capital, but pay for that out of your operating budget, it's going to limit what you have to borrow on your capital budget. Because you're just two projects between city hall and water, you're talking about a hundred and three thousand. With what you already borrowed, you're up to a hundred sixty-three thousand. So just, just want to caution every tale that the, these are, these are numbers and these are what's coming at you.
Thank you.
Otherwise, I do congratulate you, Jerry. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
All right, we have a motion and a second on resolution B in the court of rule.
Trustee's Rawlings.
Yes.
You guys will read.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Hi, uh, budget resolution C, uh, village uh, tax levy and warrant settling setting, uh, the tax levy rate. Uh, textual assessment of a, 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 uh, the assessed valuation of the village property is four billion, four hundred ninety-nine million, five hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred nine dollars. And the assessed, uh, there there will be results of the tax levy for the village of America for the fiscal year commencing June first, twenty-twenty-three. B and the same hereby is fixed by the total estimate in approximate of twenty-eight million, thirty-four thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollars. So I need that motion.
You made a motion, uh, uh, I, I'm so moved. Oh, who's second, I'll second it.
Paul, please.
Trustee's Rawlings.
Yes.
You guys will read.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Lucas, yes. Mayor Murphy.
Hi. Uh, budget D, library, library tax levy and warrant. Oh, boy. Uh, I think they left. Uh, whereas it is duly approved and determined that the eligible voters, that the sum of three million, eighty thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars will be necessarily to meet the obligations of the library district. Okay, so that, that is uh, their, their tax levy, uh, the resolution being in front of you. If they have any questions, concerns, please give me a motion.
So move. Second, please call.
Trustee's Rawlings.
Yes.
You guys will read. Yes. Young.
Yes.
Lucas, yes. Mayor Murphy.
Hi, would you, would, would it be easier if I called? No, you're right, okay, okay, you've got a lot going on there now.
She needs one of these mics.
I can do it, Sally, if you want, uh. Twenty-three, twenty-four certi- certification of arrears due for unpaid amounts receivable on various properties and including such amounts in the annual tax levy, authorizing the levy of the same upon a real property in default. Any questions, concerns? Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, please, Sally.
Trustee's Rawlings.
Yes.
You guys will read. Young.
Yes.
Lucas, yes. Mayor Murphy.
Hi, uh, Westchester Water Works arrears for water charges on various properties. Uh, when people haven't paid their water bills, uh, we the charges go onto their property tax and the village actually gets a fee for doing this. Uh, so it's actually makes a little money for the village too. Uh, and the total amount is a hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars and two cents. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Sally.
Trustee's Rawlings.
Yes.
You guys will read.
Yeah, yeah.
Young.
Yes.
Lucas, yes. Mayor Murphy.
Hi.
Can we just check the library number?
Actually, um, when I looked over the resolutions last week, I confirmed to both Augie and Laura that the three million eighty was the levy that was approved as part of the budget in September. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I made sure, make sure that one was right.
Thanks, Dylan. Yes, thank you. Uh, yeah, you are hereby commanded to receive and collect from the several persons named in the tax roll uh, here on to annex the, the several sums stated in the tax roll here of opposite their respective names be a total of thirty-one million, two hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars and two cents for the following purposes, for the current budget, twenty-eight million that we talked about before, the library district, the three million and change that we talked about before, unpaid water arrears, the hundred and forty-five thousand that we talked about before, and for the special assessments, forty-nine hundred, which leaves us with thirty-one million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred twenty-nine dollars and two cents. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Paul, please.
Trustee Rawlings.
Yes.
You guys will read. Once. Young.
Yes.
Lucas, yes. Mayor Murphy.
Hi, uh, reallocating funds with, within appropriations to provide for salary increases for non-union employees. And this provides for raises for the uh, judges and the board of trustees and for all of the unrepresented uh, employees and an, an unrepresented employee is basically an employee that doesn't belong to the union. Uh, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee's Rawlings.
Yes.
You guys will read.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Lucas, yes. Mayor Murphy.
Hi.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. H. I, uh, village of American budget authorization for investments. Resolved that the village per treasurer and the deputy treasurer during a fiscal year beginning June first, twenty-twenty-three authorized to invest monies not needed for immediate expenditure in accordance with provisions of general municipal law, the local finance law and the village investment policy. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Trustee Rawlings.
Yes.
You guys will read. Yeah. Young.
Yes.
Lucas, yes. Mayor Murphy.
Hi, uh, budget resolution, village of America changes in various properties to be included in tax revenues. Uh, and the change is a forty-nine hundred uh, dollar change to section block lot, section block lot nine dash twelve dash one fifty-seven. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Paul, Paul, please.
Trustee Rawlings.
Yes.
You guys will read. Yes. Young.
Yes.
Lucas, yes. Mayor Murphy.
Hi. Uh, Georgia American budget termination of exempt status, uh, five oh twenty S, resolution authorizing the levying collection of additional taxes upon termination of exempt status. Uh, this is when people have veterans exemptions, senior citizens exemptions. Now we're gonna have a fire, uh, firefighter exemptions. If you sell that house, the exemption doesn't go with the house, it goes with the person. So this authorizes, uh, the clear treasury ex office to then uh, change the tax levy for that house to full valuation. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
Trustee's Rawlings.
Yes.
You guys will read.
Yeah.
Young.
Yes.
Lucas, yes. Mayor Murphy.
Hi, and that concludes the budget hearings, uh, need a motion to close the budget hearings?
So move.
Second.
Paul. Paul.
Trustee Rawlings.
Yes.
You guys will read.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Lucas, yes. Mayor Murphy.
Hi, uh, I want to thank staff for their hard work. I want to thank the village board for the many meetings we had and the input and the uh, changes that were made and changes that we made, I think we added, I don't know, sixty, seventy thousand dollars. And it was all to pretty much to benefit people in the community, uh, to increase uh, day camp scholarships, uh, to to give money to the community council and center above what we had and to uh, help the arts council. And various stuff, and and to help people in the flood zone, uh, deal with their problems. So I, I, I commend the board for those uh, slight additions.
And and at the end of this fiscal year, um, uh, we've been told by the staff that we will be adding to the uh, reserve fund.
As we always do.
So.
Uh, what I'm gonna do is I'm, I'm gonna break from regular order. And what I'm gonna do, folks, is when we're doing voting tonight, if you don't mind, uh, I'm just gonna ask for all in favor. Just to.
For what, for what now?
Just as we will be.
Okay.
I don't usually do that, but send one. Uh.
And Sally only has two hands.
And Sally only has two. Uh, item two A. What do I have two B? Oh, I see, item two A is a resolution, well, authorized into execute budget transfers from over budget expense lines. Can everybody see the, in front of you? Everybody have any questions or concerns? I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Bye.
Uh, the ordered vouchers tonight of four hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred, fifteen dollars and forty-eight cents. Uh, any questions or concerns?
No.
No, all right, I need a motion.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, old business, new, new business, resolution scheduling, public hearing on P L L B twenty-twenty-three uh, election cycles, term limit changes. Uh, this was a law that we've, we've been kicking around since the new board uh, got into office. And what this will do is it will change uh, the terms of office for elected officials uh, from two years to four years. Uh, please hand it down.
Sure.
Uh, it will not affect myself or Nora, myself and Nora, uh, running this year, uh, for a two-year term. Those that have uh, opined that I uh, wanted to stay in office an indefinite amount, I can guarantee you that this is my last time running for office in the village of America. Uh, so the next, the, the next, uh, the next, uh, time someone runs for office, they'll be running for a four-year term.
I hear cheering.
Next year. If this, if this, if the referendum passes.
The referendum passes.
Okay.
Uh, any questions or concerns?
And uh, the, the, the main thrust of this, the thing that I've always been focused on is eliminating the off-year elections, that's what it does.
To increase voter participation.
Exactly.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Hi.
No.
No.
Idea.
Okay, fair, okay. Uh, resolution for second round of offer funding. Jerry, you want to explain this briefly?
Sure, Mayor. So there's two hundred and eighty thousand that we're putting aside, um, to help. Thank you. Two hundred and eighty thousand that the board is putting aside to assist flood victims who are unable to collect from the office of the governor's, um, what is the G O S R again?
Uh, Governor's Office of Storm Control.
They, um, fifty thousand dollars for training, for specialized training and awareness and protection service to purchase of three new hybrid police car. Uh, we currently have, um, nine, and this would be uh, replacing three of the nine hybrids. Um, replacement of uh, damaged sidewalks of uh, in the floodplown areas um, at Howard and Lester and Underhill and New Street, uh, which would be four hundred thousand dollars.
I knew these were discussed by the board at a couple of uh, work sessions. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor. Hi, great. Uh, adopting fees associated with front yard collection of food scraps, street open permits and dog park access.
Qualify its name. Park.
Bark park. Access. It's gonna take some goodies.
Called it by its name.
Uh, yeah, smile when you say that. Um, I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Hi.
Bye.
Thank you all. Uh, resolution scheduling, public hearing of proposed local law M of twenty-twenty-three, proposed local law to amend chapters two sixty of the code of the village of America regarding the use of village parks, and this has to you, to do with the uh, with, with the bark park. Uh, because right now by law, uh, you're, you're not allowed to have dogs in the park, and this will change that.
Off-leash.
Off-leash, yeah. Uh, any questions or concerns, but sitting in public hearing. When we sit in for, we're sitting in a public hearing. When we set in for, we're sitting in a public hearing.
Hey.
For May eighth, the next board of trustees meeting.
As it opens.
Make twenty.
Now, I need a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Beautiful. Uh, authorizing to execute a professional service agreement to provide engineering and design services to upgrade and replace sidewalks on Underhill, Ralph, New Street, Hillside Avenue and Howard Avenue. Uh, this is the area around the Baptist Church on Howard Avenue and around Saint Vito's, uh, church and school uh, over on, uh, Underhill. Uh, and New Street. The sidewalks are very unsafe and those are very, uh, highly, uh, highly traveled uh, areas of the village. And especially, uh, on the weekends, there are a lot of senior citizens, uh, walking in very uneven sidewalks. Uh, so I need a motion?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Great.
I mean, note, this is what the, we're using some article funding for this.
Yeah. Uh, change order to contract with Artistry and Hanover to complete the update to the comprehensive plan. Uh, we talked about this in work session. Uh, it's nine thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, Mr. Neil Desay has been working, uh, decide, has been working very diligently to get us to the final draft. And, uh, there's certain changes that are going to be included in that. And, uh, so we, we, uh, thank him for his efforts, but like, uh, anybody, he, uh, expects to be paid for his work. Uh, so I make that motion.
Certainly.
All in favor?
Hi.
Fine. Oh, he did actually say he'd finish it.
His boss must be watching him. Uh,
What a great guy.
Supplemental appropriation budget transfers to a capital budget account uh, for Department of Justice Social Service grant for body worn cameras.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we had ordered body worn cameras for, uh, police officers. Uh, they, they, uh, are rolling them out in a, uh, in, in a, uh, test program now. We have forty-four, but forty-four doesn't give every officer a camera. And it leaves us no, uh, spares. So we got another grant. So this isn't coming out of the tax, uh, levy. Uh, we got another grant to buy us, uh, uh, eighty-four thousand dollars worth of more cameras and equipment. So thirty-four, it says eighty-four in the thing.
I got thirty-four in the resolution.
No, it was eighty, we got, uh, I think it was an eighty-four thousand dollar original grant. And it's Okay, this is thirty-four. All right, okay, I see. I'm sorry. My mistake. Uh, okay, so we're, we're taking general fund appropriating thirty-four thousand and putting it into that budget line. And then we will receive the grant money from the state and reimburse that one. Okay. Uh, I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great program. Thank you to Police Department for rolling this out. And thank you for the committee that we formed, uh, to review police practices that first recommended this. Especially Jared Winchester. I'll tell you, give him a shout out. Uh, resolution authorizing, uh, dispersment of tan proceeds. Oh, we did that already.
Yeah.
Bingo. All right. Uh, last shot at, uh, talking to the board. Three, three minutes.
One more time.
Glad it's ten thirty.
Very quickly, um, a couple of questions were asked about affordable housing, about of the school. Uh, several years ago, there was actually a complete comprehensive study of the village. It showed that, um, basically condos and apartments led to virtually no increase in the number of students within the school system negligible. Um, when you talk about the schools, uh, Chasworth Avenue and Murray Avenue are bursting at the seams. The next in, uh, population is Central School. The last in population is American Avenue School. American Avenue has, uh, grammar school has the least amount of students of the four grammar schools that are in the American system. Uh, to speak about the library, I wish you had, uh, brought Ellen up. Um, just to, 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 to people know, the library has formed a budget committee with, uh, two members of the, um, of the trustees of the library and three CEOs from the outside. Uh, they have a forensics accountant that is giving them much advisement of things to put into place, safety items to put in place. I know Jerry, Augie, Sally, Laura have all, uh, chipped in to help with this. So they are going to have
I didn't get
Well, Chip is a doctor, so. So base, basically that all, all the, the, they're going to be putting in place all, all the safety measures that, that you look forward. And the pub, this is important for the public to know that they're not, they're not standing on their hands. They, they are, they are, they are really trying to make sure that everything's in place. And like I said, the library has to come back before this board, before they get the next payment. And if this board isn't happy with what they hear, well, then, then they might not be happy with what the board votes. But lastly, I would like my sis, thank my sister who's in the audience whose basically, basic comment is, I want you to thank the board, the staff of the village of America for having you speak and occupy your time, because if you weren't talking to them, you'd be talking to me.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
God bless you, man.
I'd call him up if I can.
Report from the village manager.
A mayor other than the, um, thank you. Other than this, um, budget that we just passed tonight, which, um, is a one point eight-six percent increase. Um, the best news about this, uh, piece of paper that I have in front of me is that the assessment in the village of America has gone up to four billion, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred ninety-eight thousand. Or, sorry, four million, seven hundred ninety-nine million, five hundred and eighty, ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and nine dollars. Which means if your assessment did not go up, your taxes will go down four point one nine percent.
And, and, and
Way to keep things
And how we, how we now judge assessment is based upon
I want your board, part one.
One nine.
How we now judge assessment is based upon the actual sale of houses.
Correct.
Uh, which was not the case for a long time. We got a, a, a adjusted tax rate from the estate, uh, real property, uh, office. And it was usually inaccurate. Uh, and many, many properties were not, uh, fairly assessed and some were getting a break when they didn't deserve a break. And that, that was then, uh, people were getting a break. You didn't deserve a break. So that put, you know, pressure on people who were over assessed. Or people who even assessed in the middle, they had to pick up that slack.
But so how unusual is
Just
Well, I'm sorry.
Yes, it's okay. And, and as usually works in this world, for some strange reason, it, it was the houses that were the most expensive that were under assessed. And the houses that were least expensive that were over assessed. So some reason, reason in America, that's the way it always works.
Um, I've only worked for a couple of municipalities, you know, sometimes two at a time, and this never happens. The assessment typically does not go up.
Yeah.
In, at this rate. So we live in a very
Well, I'm talking about the assessments. I'm talking about how unusual is for the act, for the real tax to go down.
Based on the assessment?
Yeah.
This is only the second time that this has happened in my tenure and both in America.
But, but
There's your headline.
But, but that would be evenly distributed across the board.
Right.
Yeah.
That's
All right, thank you, Jerry.
And your assessment.
That into Thank you, Augie. Thank you for, uh,
Thank you for being, that's great news.
Report from the village attorney.
Uh, I want to, the mayor local law five of twenty twenty-three, which was the partial tax exemption for volunteer firefighters and volunteer agents. Mentioned earlier, he's filed for the Secretary of State, but they've affected on March thirty-first.
Excellent. And what that is, is this board decided that, uh, to keep